It is time, alright? Good evening, everybody. We'll open up today's session. What? Today's session of the close, excuse me, the special city council meeting. We're going to be discussing tonight water and wastewater. We have a workshop on that, also AB 1600 impact fee workshop. May I get roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
May we do a pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Cardoza and then invocation followed from Mr. Shaw?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, Lord, and we just thank you for the awesome responsibility that you've given us, the privilege to oversee this great city of Yuba City. Father, we just pray that you will give us keen insight and wisdom beyond our years as we listen and make decisions that will shape the future of our great city. And we just thank you now in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you very much. Moving along in the agenda, item number one, appearance of interested citizens. Anybody would like to address the city council concerning any item that has been described in a notice that this meeting may step forward at this time? I don't see any speaker cards. Correct? None? Alright. Seeing that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. We have a motion on that, on the one item.
Move in second.
Move in second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Before there's a vote, could we let the entire consent calendar go out to public comment?
Um, yes. However, I thought that's what I just did when I asked for public comment.
I'm sorry. I thought you were doing with the appearance of interested citizens.
Well, okay. Anybody would like to, in the public, would like to discuss anything else? Alright. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, please. Alright, motion carries. Thank you very much. Number three, water and wastewater operations overview by Diana Langley.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
You have water up there?
I do have water up here, actually.
Alright, you're gonna need it.
I'm prepared.
Alright.
Before I get started, I'd like to just point out some of the staff here in the audience. So I have Ben Moody, who's a deputy public works director for engineering. Mandeeb Chohon, who is a senior engineer with the department, and he primarily does the majority of the utility projects. And then far right, we have Dan Poe, who's the chief plant operator at the wastewater treatment facility. And then Dave Collender, who's a water treatment plant operator at the water treatment plant. So the purpose of the workshop tonight is to present a general overview of the water and wastewater functions. Items I will cover include water supply and system overview, wastewater system overview, a financial overview, rates, connection fees, outside connections, and capital improvement So to start with water, the primary source of water for the city is surface water from the Feather River. There's also a groundwater well at the water treatment plant that is used to supplement surface water during drought conditions. This last drought that began in 2013 is the first time that the city's had to continuously operate the well in order to supplement supplies. The city is able to withdraw water from the Feather River under two appropriative water rights and two water contracts. Appropriative water rights are administered by the state Water Resources Control Board, Division of Water Rights, and have an assigned priority date based on when the water right was initially applied for. Water users with the earliest appropriation dates have higher priority to use water. Water users with a later date are lower priority can use water as long as they do not infringe on the rights of others. So the license 13855 was issued in 2012. Originally, it was a permit. It allows the city to divert water from January 1st to July 1st and September 1st to December 31st of each year. Permit 18558 has a lower priority than the license. It may be diverted, water may be diverted from January 1st to June 30th and October 1st to December 31st. Because this has a lower priority, it's often curtailed, which means that a lot of times in the spring, we have to stop using it around the late April, early May timeframe. There's no cost for water taken under these appropriative water rights. In addition, we have two water contracts. So you have the North Yuba Water District contract that was executed in 1965 that provides for up to 4,500 acre feet per year. It's used for summer supply and the contract term is through 2035. The cost is approximately about $75 per acre foot. In addition, you have the state water project, which the contract was executed in 1963. And again, the city primarily uses this water for summer supplies. The contract term is through 2038, but their DWR is currently in negotiations to extend the contract. The 2019 cost for this water is $756,500, and we pay regardless of our water allotment. Whatever the water that the city does not use under the state water project, the city is allowed to bank. And so when I say bank, the water is stored in the San Luis Reservoir. That's where they consider storing it. And then during years that we need additional water supply, we can use that banked water to supplement our supplies, even though we're withdrawing it from the Feather River just south of Orville. The state water project considers me banked at the San Luis Reservoir. So for reference purposes, going into 2019, we currently have 5,485 acre feet of banked water. So it's important to note on this slide, the maximum allocation versus the reasonably available volume. So the maximum allocation would assume that we had 100% utilization of our rights and then our water contracts. When you add in the well, that totals 31,840 acre feet per year. However, because the state water project allocation is reduced, I'm not going to say often reduced, it's reduced, we don't receive 100% allocation under that contract, the reasonably available volume is 28,190 acre feet per year. So looking at historical water usage for the last 10 years, you can see not only the impact of the drought, but how also water demand compares to water supply. So 2013, oh, Carol, I think we lost the battery on this. 2013 is about when the drought started. And then you can see that from the years on, from there, we started to get mandates from the governor in terms of requiring conservation. And so you see a reduction in the water use. You can also see from this graph that when you compare our water demand to reasonably available volume, there's still quite a bit of capacity there. Moving on to the, look at the 2000s. Yes, excuse me.
I should have asked you this before. How would you like questions as they arise? Would you like it at the end or as we go?
Oh, please, as we go.
I have one right here. I have to go back a slide or two.
Through the mayor. Thanks, Diana. On the previous slide, just on the banked water, just to curiosity, is that subject to reduction or should we be able to count on that?
We, I can tell you through this last drought, we were able to count on that, and that's actually what helped us get us through the drought. So in addition to the well water, we use that banked water. Now, when we had the record water in 2017, once San Luis Reservoir spills, because it's full, our bank goes away. And so we're zeroed out. And so 2017, we started new again. So between 2017 to now, we have been able to carry over water for two years.
Thank you.
Okay, so looking at the water demand, the purpose of this slide isn't so much to show the actual demand, it's to show you the time of use in terms of the months. As expected, the summer months are much higher than the rest of the year. But the key purpose of this is to show how those permits and licenses supply the non-summer demands, so spring, winter, fall. And then you have the state water project and the North Yuba Water District contract supplying the summer water. What's also key with this is that, you'll see why this is important when I get into supply versus demand for the future. So to set the stage for the next slide, I'm going to talk about near term. So as we went through our latest water master plan update, we looked at build out and then we looked at a near term scenario. And so under the near term scenario, we assumed the development of the El Margarita Master Plan, which is this area right here, from George Washington Boulevard to the east edge of the plant, so not the entire plant area, the east portion of the Lincoln East Pacific Plan, Walnut Park West, Sutter Heritage Master Plan, and then also Bog Stewart Master Plan. Because we wanted to see if those were to develop, what would the water demand be? So by build out, the city's existing supplies will not be adequate to meet existing needs and additional future water supply will be needed. In a single dry year and multiple dry year, so a single dry year would just be kind of a blip on the radar where your winter water is less than expected, but a multi-dry year would be this last drought where you have multiple years of drought. So under those conditions, we would have, be deficient in the near term scenario as well as the build out scenario. Another factor that needs to be considered into this is the time of use restrictions on the city's State Water Resources Control Board license and permit. So this table assumes that we have full access to all of the water, and which means we would need to maximize our water rights. So what does that mean? That you would use 100% of your allocation during the winter water, even though your demand's not that high? And then you would need to fully utilize your summer demands? And so one way that you could do that is through aquifer storage recovery, where you actually draw water from the Feather River to maximize your winter water supplies. You inject it into a well, and then it creates a plume within the aquifer. So then during the summer, you can withdraw that water to supplement your summer water supplies. So here's a graphic that shows that option. And so you have this ASR well, so you have confining layers, so the water doesn't migrate. And you inject it, the treated water does create a little bit of a buffer with the groundwater because they have different chemical characteristics. You'll have a little bit of a mixing zone, but for the most part, it will stay separate. And then you can withdraw that water during times of use to then supplement your supplies.
Question, Diana?
Yes.
So that description there, if we back up, that technique to maximize winter usage, drawing out of the river and storing it for later, even though we're not using our maximum during the winter, does that table that shows that we are deficient on build out take that into account or is that a way to combat that?
No, that takes that into account.
Okay, thank you.
So it assumes that you're using 100% of the State Water Resources Control Board license and permit.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So options to meet future demands would be additional groundwater wells. But with that, you would need to do point source treatment most likely, where you have treatment plants on site to address water quality issues. Purchase additional water supplies. I can say during this last drought, we had worked with another provider to look at purchasing additional water supplies, and we were looking at a cost of about $400 per acre foot, which is very high. And then implement additional water reduction measures. At that point, when you're in a single year and multi-year drought, that's assuming that you're putting your water shortage conservation plan into effect and you're putting your conservation measures into effect. This would have to be in addition to that. And so that would be very painful for everyone involved, so our customers as well as the city. And so as we move forward into the future, and I also want to note that those demands are assuming that we meet the state's requirements for water usage. So the governor's latest waters-a-way-of-life, it assumes that that's taking effect. So the key point of this is that as we move into the future, we will need to explore additional water options to serve build out of the community and then serve near term in a single and multi-year scenario. Regardless, all of these options are costly. So to move on to the water system overview, the water treatment plant was placed into operation in 1969. It operates 24 hours a day, year round, thanks to operators like Mr. Dave Collender over there. It was expanded in 1999 to 24 million gallons per day, and again in 2007 to 36 million gallons per day. The current permitted capacity is 42 million gallons per day. So for reference purposes, our winter demand is approximately 9 million gallons per day and our summer demand is approximately 19 million gallons per day. So there's still quite a bit of capacity there at the plant. Here is an aerial shot of the water treatment plant. It doesn't show, we have put solar panels in the easterly sludge lagoon, so this is a little bit of an outdated picture, but this provides an overview. You can see in terms of a treatment process, for reference, you'll see a slide for the wastewater treatment plant in which you'll see a lot more treatment process functions. But for water treatment, pretty straightforward. What's, what is unique about the city's water treatment plant is we have two different types of treatments. So we have membrane filters and then we have conventional filters as well. Moving on to the water distribution system, we have approximately 265 miles of transmission and distribution mains. So transmission mains are the backbone infrastructure, and then the distribution lines are those water lines that are within the subdivisions. Sizes range from 3 inches to 36 inches, and the oldest lines date back to the 1920s. And so those older lines are in the key downtown area. So that would be almond, orange, kind of bounded by B Street to the south, Highway 20 to the north, Cooper to the west, and then Plumas to the east. But those are all very small diameter galvanized pipe lines. We also have six storage tanks. So before I move on to wastewater operations, are there any questions about the water operations?
Through the mayor. Ms. Langley, on those older pipes that are around the Plumas Street area, we replaced Plumas Street when we did the downtown district.
We did.
Are the pipes surrounding that in as just as bad as condition as Plumas Street was? And are we going to be looking to have to replace those in the near future as we did Plumas Street? Or what's the analysis on that at this point?
Those, I would actually argue those pipelines are probably in worse condition than the Plumas Street pipelines were before we replaced it. We do have some large transmission line, large traditional line that goes down Cooper. And so we have pipelines around it that are newer and in good condition, but we do need to replace those pipelines. We went through a few years ago and replaced all the sewer lines, which were about that era as well. We need to replace the water lines. Expensive project, and we, another reason to do is for fire flows for those neighborhoods as well.
And follow up, do we have a projected timeline that you've put that out on the horizon that we need to complete those projects by? Is it health sensitive to our residents in that area? What is the current status of that? And have we projected that out five years, 10 years?
Okay, so there's not a health issue associated with it. In terms of, so through the rate structure that we have, we're collecting $1 million annually for pipeline, distribution system rehab and replacement. That also includes the tanks. So that million dollars does not go significantly far. One option would be to go ahead and do a larger project to replace it and use that money for the debt service to pay for it, like we did with the wastewater replacement project. The other option is to pay as you go. And so we have some other locations that the water lines need attention, but that is probably one of the highest priority project locations for us. It's just based upon the cost. We will need to come to council for input in terms of one large project that's financed or pay as you go to do, you know, a street at a time. What complicates it is those streets are concrete streets with very minimal drainage. We've already gone through and replaced sewer lines. We then go through and replace water lines. Then you need to address drainage and then you need to address the condition of the street. So it's kind of, as soon as you open it up, you're opening a Pandora's box in terms of everything that needs to be completed. So it really requires a more in-depth discussion about the direction to go and the scope of the project.
Through the mayor. Has Governor Newsom, I know it's a pretty fresh change, but have they signaled anything in regards to their water use plans? Are they going to stay with what the previous governor had in play or have you received any kind of heads up on any of that yet?
I have not, I have not received any word that the, there's going to be relaxation of the water regulations. If anything, in terms of the low income rate assistance program, I think that there could be more put upon California water customers, whether it's a bottled water tax or an alcohol tax or a tax, you know, increase on your property taxes or something like that. I know that they're looking at different options, but I don't see a relaxation of the current legislation for water usage.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will move on to wastewater. Also, I'd like to note, Mike Finnegan in the back, he is our wastewater treatment facility supervisor. Mike, if you could raise your hand. So the wastewater treatment plant was placed into operation in 1972. Again, it operates 24 hours a day, year round. Expanded in 2005, the current permitted capacity is 10.5 million gallons per day. The current average flow is 6.5 million gallons per day. And then you have about 11,000 pounds per day of solids into the facility. So going back to that picture of the water treatment plant, here's a picture of the wastewater treatment plant, and you can see it's a much more intensive process in terms of treatment. The wastewater collection system is comprised of approximately 173 miles of sewer mains that range in size from 6 inches to 42 inches, and the oldest lines date back to the 1920s. And we have 17 sewer lift stations throughout the collection system. The other thing I'd like to note is we have several lines that are still located in backyards. And so that becomes a maintenance issue as you're trying to clean these older sewer lines that are located in the backyards in terms of getting equipment back there. And so ultimately, what we would like to see is relocating those backyard lines into the streets. But that, of course, takes, takes time and money to do that. So any questions about wastewater before I move into a financial overview?
Through the mayor. Just curious still, from previous times, I know that SunSuite was like a huge user of water and also sewer. Is there any current percentage, or they, I mean, do you guys have that kind of information?
We do have that information. In terms of water, they are a large customer, but they're not the large, you know, they're not a huge percentage of our water consumption through the city. However, wastewater, if I remember correctly, in terms of the loading on the plant, they are about equivalent to the whole residential area of the city. And so we were tested a couple of years ago, and historically, SunSuite's only gone out of, down from operation for one week in December. A couple of years ago, they went down for an entire month, and it was like operating a brand-new plant. We had never operated the plant based upon that, and the operators and supervisors, it was a real lesson for them to see what would happen if SunSuite were to go away. It had a significant impact on our plant. Okay. So for...
Through the mayor. I have a question, Diana. Having, I haven't had the opportunity to go visit both of your sites, but I'm going to go out there. I'm just curious, not just the wastewater, but on the water itself, that we pull in the water from Feather River, correct? And then how does that affect with the farming industry around us? And how do we work with, with our partners in that if there is going to be a shortage? Is there any of that occurring? That's my question.
So in terms of the water we draw from the Feather River, that's why we have the two water rights, and then we have the contract, so that we have the ability to draw the water legally. We have to account for that water, so we report to the state on a monthly basis in terms of how much water we withdrew. We have meters on those pipelines so that we can accurately account for that water. In terms of other individuals that might draw from the Feather River, they would need to have similar rights to be able to do that. And so what happens is the state Water Resources Control Board controls that through their curtailment and the issuance of the permits, licenses, and then these other contracts that we have. Groundwater is a little bit different story. So undergroundwater, we have the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And so we have worked with the, we're part of a larger group, including the county and then many of the water irrigation agencies within Sutter County to monitor groundwater levels. I can tell you our well at the water treatment plant is very deep. I think it's about 450 foot deep. And so our well's much deeper than surrounding wells. And so when we were withdrawing water during drought conditions, we didn't have any reports of impacting any adjacent wells. And then we also do have to do monitoring as well.
Okay. Because during, yeah, during the drought, when it was heavily being regulate, or, you know, the shortage, I often heard from, you know, the farming community that the groundwater was the most concerning and how to access and how the impacts of residential homes and trying to, I guess, lack for a better word, competing to, you know, for the usage and access of water.
Yeah. So... Yeah, so during the drought, the, we operated the well at the water treatment plant, but we didn't operate wells anywhere else in the distribution system. And so any impact would have been up near the water treatment plant. Like I said, that well's so deep. I did hear of issues with shallower wells from not only, you know, residences, but they weren't adjacent to our water treatment plant in terms of the areas that I heard the issues with.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor. Question, going back to SunSuite. I know that they're a good community partner here in the, in our local area. Have we had discussions with them as far as seeing what wastewater they can reclaim and reuse? It seems like it might benefit us on both sides. If they're able to reclaim and reuse water, that would help us on the intake side to cut down with our resources. But then likewise, if they're able to reduce that on the outflow as well, that would cut down the burden on the wastewater treatment plant. Have we talked with them, looked and seen what they have? And from a business perspective, it would cut down their overhead. Has those discussions or anything ever happened with SunSuite? Do we know what they're doing?
They have happened with SunSuite.
Okay.
So as we were going through the rate studies, we met with SunSuite, because we were concerned about the increases to their rates because they are large customers, and so their rates went up significantly. We have talked to them about, from an operational standpoint, what can we do to help them not only reduce the amount of water that they're consuming, but also the amount of water that they're discharging? As part of our wastewater system master plan update, we will be evaluating options that we can do to assist perhaps with the biosols that are generated from the plant. And so we have, I want to say we have somewhat frequent conversations with them. We also, through our pre-treatment coordinator, because they're an industrial permit holder for us, our pre-treatment coordinator works with them on a regular basis. And, you know, we try to stay in contact with them to see what partnerships we can form and then how can we help them with their operations to try to minimize the water usage and then the water discharge? Because it also takes up capacity in our backbone infrastructure. And so if you're able to reduce the outflow from their facility, that means more capacity within your pipelines. As we have limited capacity in those pipelines, that impacts the amount of development that can go into those pipelines. So it's a benefit to all of us to work with them to try to reduce the usage.
And it's probably a vast contract because they are a contrast because they are such a large business here in our area. What would you say is, is there any other businesses in this area that are of that magnitude that we could also collaboratively work with? Because I'm just, I'm looking at both sides of the equation here. If we can cut down the intake, cut down the outtake, it saves our system and it builds in the reserves that we need. Is, do have we identified other potential businesses here that we could work with?
The other large industrial customer is Valley Fine Foods, and they are located down in that Garden Highway industrial area. They're not near the magnitude of SunSuite, but again, we have a pre-treatment coordinator. They have a permit with the city, and so our pre-treatment coordinator coordinates with them. They're, you know, they are metered, so we know how much they are using and discharging. And so, you know, we've tried to, as part of the rate study process, reach out to those industrial customers and establish contacts and relationships so that we can have those ongoing conversations of how can we help you and how can you help us?
Okay, thank you.
For the financial overview, the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds are separate enterprise funds established to account for water and wastewater utility transactions are separate enterprise funds established to account for water and wastewater utility transactions separate from the general fund. The revenue requirement is based on operating costs, debt service, and capital investment, with debt service being past capital projects that have been financed over time, and capital investment being ongoing capital projects that are pay-as-you-go. The revenue received is a combination of operating revenues and capital revenues. For water, their operating revenues include water sales collected through the monthly bills, backflow prevention fees, and interest on investments. Capital revenues consist of extension fees for water mains constructed in the roadway, connection fees, Hillcrest Water System surcharge, and interest on investments. So the Hillcrest System surcharge was established for the conversion of the former Hillcrest Water System to surface water. And so many of those customers pay surcharge on their monthly bill. For wastewater, the operating revenues consist of wastewater service charges collected through the monthly bills, septicage fees, lab fees, pre-treatment permits, and interest on investments. And the capital revenues consist of extension fees, connection fees, and interest on investments. You can see from these pie charts that the operating revenues right now are a much larger portion of our revenues than the capital revenues. That's because, a lot largely to do with the very minimal residential development within the city. If we were to see more residential development or more development in general with new connections, you would actually see the capital revenues being a larger portion of this pie. For the operating costs, they're broken down into variable and fixed. The fixed costs do not vary by the volume treated, while the variable costs depend on the volume treated. So examples of fixed costs. In our situation, a fixed cost is raw water. For other agencies, that's not the case, but that's because we pay for the water regardless of whether we use it. And then you have staffing, maintenance, and repairs. The variable costs include power, utilities, and chemicals. I wanted to include this slide, just to show the number of full-time equivalent positions over the last 10 years. You can see the significant reduction between '09, '10, and '10, '11. That's because there used to be a separate utilities department, separate from the Public Works Department. With the retirement of the utilities director, that department was merged with Public Works. And with the merger, some positions were cut. Also, it's interesting to note that if you were to compare the salaries and benefits from '09, '10 to now, so for water, the, in '09, it was about 2.4 million. In '17, '18, it was about 2.7 million. So even though we have four and a half less employees, it's about $300,000 more in salaries and benefits. And then for wastewater, it went from about 3 million to 3.9 million. So again, two and a half less employees approximately, but it's 9,000, about a million dollars, well, $900,000 more than then.
I have a question. When you speak of those positions, are those the positions identified in the budget? Or are those the actual bodies that are actually working?
Those positions identified in the budget. So if we were to look at the, there's, there are current vacancies within the department, so this doesn't account for those vacancies. These are just the budgeted positions. So the Water Operations Fund revenues.
Excuse me, so how many vacancies do we have?
Right now, throughout the Public Works Department, I have approximately 10. If I were to break that down into utilities, it's approximately seven positions.
Okay, thank you.
So for fiscal year 1819, the Water Operations Fund's projected revenues of about 15.9 million, with operating expenditures of about 10.7 million. The Water Operations Fund covers the water treatment plant and water distribution crew. And I think what's important to note on this slide is if you look at the salaries and benefits, it's about 27.3% of the operating expenditures. If you were to compare that to a general fund-funded department, you would find that the salaries and benefits portion is much larger. And so really, for utilities, a large portion of the cost is truly supplies and services, and then your contributions to other funds. So as I was preparing this slide, I wanted to find out more about the contributions to other funds. So actually, here's a breakdown of those contributions to other funds. So you have a transfer to general fund, so that's for the support services to utilities. So that would include finance, fleet, HR, administration, engineering, all of those divisions that provide support to the utilities functions. So it's, it's not, it's in addition to the full-time equivalent positions specifically identified for water and wastewater in the budget. For water, you have a transfer to vehicle replacement of 164,000. You have a transfer to the wastewater fund of 165,000. That's because of the lab. So the lab is funded out of wastewater, but because they perform functions for the water treatment plant, you need to transfer that money to a cost for the water portion, and then transfer to debt service.
Me again. Through the mayor, the vehicle replacement, the transfers, is that for vehicles for utilities? Or is that just to the vehicle replacement fund in general?
That is vehicle-specific to the water division.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, through the mayor. Back to the transfer to the general fund. Two million go into the general fund. Have we broken that down further? You say it's for administrative staff and support services. How are we doing that allocation? And how are we truly knowing that we are allocating the proper, you know, expense against this fund? Because do we know that it's 2.016, or is it really 1.894? Can you explain how you're justifying that and, and how we're accounting for that kind of a transfer?
Yes, I will do my best to explain it, but I might need assistance from finance. Or if I can't get that assistance, then I'll have to follow up if I don't explain it well enough. So annually, the city prepares a cost allocation plan. And so through that cost allocation plan, the departments go through, and I didn't, the general fund departments go through and identify how their people should be allocated amongst the different funds. And so they put down the estimate of how much time and resources are going to be put towards that fund. Through that, they then come up with the total costs for what should be transferred to the general fund, and that's how they establish it. Now, at the end of the year, I don't know that they come back and do like a true-up to see if that was the actual cost, or if they just take the dollar amount directly from the cost allocation plan, and that's what gets transferred. So that's where I would need a little bit of clarification, if possible, from Spencer Morrison in finance. Okay, so it's the, it's the amount identified in the cost allocation plan, and it's not the true-up amount.
Okay. Then follow up.
I'm sorry, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I know it's the voice from over here, apologies. Just as a point of clarification, so Diana's department, for example, has the engineering function, general fund function, you allocate your, all of your engineers, do a direct allocation to projects, correct? So if they're.
Well, we do a direct allocation to projects for engineers. We also allocate them to the Streets and Roads Fund, Lighting and Landscape Maintenance District, General Fund, special, any other special funds that we might have. But then we also have general utility functions. When a customer comes in off the street and says, "I'd like to connect to city water." How much would that cost? Well, then that's staff time to help the customer to develop those costs. And so what Ben does as part of the cost allocation plan is, you know, provide an estimate of how much time's going to be spent on all those different functions.
So it's something that probably a whole, there's, and Robin, when she's available in the future, can probably give a, even should the council desire, a really comprehensive overview of how this is done. But what's interesting is, absent the support, you'd look at an independent agency that would need the human resources function, the finance function, a general manager. So the benefit the general fund offers to the Water and Wastewater Fund is to pay a portion of a human resources director, a portion of a finance director. And there's, if you guys have gotten a feel for Robin, it's pretty minute in the detail of how this is allocated out to all the departments. So as we go forward with this, another presentation certainly could be made in that regard as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Follow-up. On this, and I appreciate the explanation, Spencer, thank you. But piggybacking off what our city manager said, we really should be doing a true-up. We really should be doing a justification on what the departments are being charged. Because I get the fact that you set up your allocation, and you call it a wag, take your best guess, and you allocate it. But if at some point, either annually or every other year, do a true-up to see, we could actually be wasting funds inside of our water and wastewater, supporting other departments. And it could be that we've got too higher rates here, and we're not charging appropriately somewhere else. That's what I'm driving to. I totally understand balancing back and forth, Steve. I do accounting and, and finance as, as my profession, but we have to do.
So do I. So we're in the same boat.
We're in the same boat. We gotta do the true-up at some point. And do you know when the last true-up was really done?
I don't know that.
We do, just a point of clarification, this is where I really want Robin here, because you're getting into very good questions. If Diana has vacancies within her engineers, and there are a certain number of engineers that were assigned over to water and wastewater, Robin will adjust the allocation based on actual filled positions. So she won't just do a blanket transfer, she does an adjustment. So if you look at the budgeted amount versus the actual amount, there will be a change based upon that. To the degree she does that, it may not reach the level of detail that you're indicating. So I don't want to overrepresent it, but I knew, I know that generally speaking, she does make sure that it's reasonably appropriate, so, yeah.
Thanks for hanging in there. So is, is this based on, maybe you might have the answer. Is this based on a percentage that is a standard percentage across the board for all departments? For a transfer in a general fund?
No, so as part of the cost allocation plan, so what happens is we get spreadsheets for each division.
Okay.
And we go through, and you actually have each position as a, as a row on that spreadsheet. And then across the columns, you have all the different funding sources for the city. And so what happens is the supervisor goes through, and based on position by position, estimates how much of that person's time is going to be spent upon each of the, the revenue, the funding sources. And so at the end of it, they total the percentage for each funding source to come up with a total dollar amount that would then represent that transfer. And so it varies from year to year. And so it's truly a, a process of where they take, they put a lot of time and effort into it to try to estimate what the cost is going to be and what, what each individual person's going to be doing. Now, recognizing throughout the year, things change. And so you could have people doing a little bit different functions. So I understand the, the concept of the true-up. But it is a detailed process, it's not just a straight percentage.
Okay, so that's what I was trying to figure out, if it was based on the revenue or the actual expenditures. And if you look at just the actual revenue, it's about a 4.75%. So I think we would definitely like to have more clarity on how that decision process is made, on when this, you know, these funds are being transferred into a general fund. And, and the agency where, where I work at, the state sets the standard of what they call the indirect rate, which covers those things that you were mentioning on, you know, for paying for a little bit of Steve's time, paying for a little bit of Terrell's time, paying for those things that, you know, the air conditioning, the lighting, the maintenance of the room, that's what we tend to use. So I'm thinking that that's a similar function of what you're utilizing these funds. But there's a standard of the percentage that, that is utilized. And I think that maybe we need to have further, you know, conversations about how that has come together.
Yeah, I think a great opportunity for that is going to be as part of the budget preparation process, because these numbers are directly out of the budget. And so as Robin and her staff prepare the budget, that would be an opportunity to have discussions about how, particularly going into fiscal year 1920, those numbers were developed, and then as they're closing out the last fiscal year.
I think that'd be a great idea. Diana, the $2 million sitting there just generally transferred to the general fund is a pretty big number, and I can definitely understand the questions. And I think it's appropriate for us to at least be educated or informed a little bit more detail as to where the.
And this is just the water portion.
Exactly.
My next slide will get into wastewater.
Yeah, we'll figure, probably the same question and request on the other end too. But thank you for that information. I know you're not a finance person, but you did a heck of a job explaining it.
Thank you.
And thank you for your input to Mr. City Manager. Thank you very much. All right.
Okay, now I'm going to switch to water capital funds. So if you remember, those are the extension fees, connection fees. With this, the revenues have been pretty modest over, you know, this, this, what they're projecting for this budget, so 1.1 million. The expenditures, 1.7 million. So you can see there's an issue there. Your expenditures exceed your revenues. And so a large portion of that is related to debt service. And so your debt service payments exceed the revenues that you have coming in for extension fees and connection fees. And so what happens is in that situation is that rates end up supplementing that debt service. But finance has, has been aware of this and presented this to council for the past several years, and they account for it separately. So at such time as the capital revenues increase, they have an accounting of how much the rates have supplemented the capital revenues. I'm pausing here for a minute, because this is off the.
Just want to bring it back on center here. So basically, what you're saying is, with more development, more connection fees, the, basically the fund stabilizes itself, and we quit being dependent on the rates to do the debt service?
Correct. Well, we're less dependent on the rates doing the capital portion of the debt service.
Exactly.
So speaking of debt service, here's a table of the debt service specific to water. So approximately $3.2 million. This table shows the original amount, the interest rate, the approximate annual payment, and then the final debt payment. So, you know, ranges from final debt payment in 2031 to 2035. Okay, now I'm going to move on to the wastewater operations fund. So in fiscal year 1819, projected revenues of about 16.3 million, with operating expenditures of 12, about 12.3 million. On this one, you can see salaries and benefits are about 33.3% of the operating expenditures. Supplies and services, a lot more chemicals involved in this processing, so $4.6 million. And contributions to other funds, $3.4 million. And then capital acquisitions, capital acquisitions, of course, varies from year to year, depending upon the capital acquisitions that the council approves. So the breakdown of contributions to other funds, so transfer to the general fund of 1.9 million, transfer to vehicle replacement of 113,000, and then transfer to debt service of 1.4 million. Okay. Wastewater Capital Fund, again, the revenues are 634,000, expenditures 709,387. So the revenue is slightly less than the expenditures. In this situation, we have a little bit of capital fund, I'll call it reserves on hand, where we're able to make up this difference. But it's only a period of time until that runs out, and then rates are supplementing the capital portion of debt service payments. And then here is a table showing the debt service for wastewater. Again, the approximate annual payments, $2.1 million, with the final debt payment ranging from 2025 to 2042. So now I will shift to rates. So to ensure adequate revenues in the Water and Wastewater Enterprise Funds for operation and maintenance, debt service coverage, and capital projects. So that's the purpose of rates. So the methodology used to establish rates is to identify net revenue requirements, analyze the cost to serve each customer class, such as residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, and determine the rate structure that will best meet the city's needs to collect rate revenues from each of those customer classes. So key attributes of a sound rate structure include that they need to be as easy to understand from a customer's perspective, easy to administer from the city's perspective, promote the efficient allocation of the resource, be equitable and non-discriminating. In other words, they should be cost-based, provide continuity in the rate-making philosophy over time, and provide month-to-month and year-to-year revenue stability. So those were the, that's the methodology and the attributes that were considered when developing the current rate structure. So a key assumption that I want to note in the last rate study is that the customer growth is based upon 50 units per year. So we went back and historically looked at how many residential building permits have been issued on an annual basis, and utilized, decided to use 50 units per year. Now, in previous studies, that number's been up, up to 350 units per year. But that 50 units per year, we felt was realistic to assume in this last rate study.
I don't know if you mentioned it, and if I missed it. I don't know if you mentioned it and if I missed it. How often are you doing these rate studies?
Oh, okay. So every five years. And so the last one was approved through the Proposition 218 process in 2016. I have a slide up here that shows the history. The one prior to that was 2011. And then there was a period of, I think, three years prior to that where we didn't have any rate study that covered that time period. So you'll see that the rates just stayed flat during that time period. So in 2016, as I mentioned, the city went through a Proposition 218 process to adopt new water and wastewater rates. If you were in the city at that time, you know, there was a lot of discussion about the different options that were presented, a lot related to the base allocation. And then where we landed is on this rate structure. And so this last year, council approved, or for this last fiscal year, council approved rate increases. I want to note the, the rates shown for fiscal year 1920 and 2021 were based upon those recommended for those years in May of this, of 2018. So when we went to council as part of the budget review process in May of 2018, we showed them not only the rates for fiscal year 1819, but also what we were projecting for the next two years. These have not been set. This is just for reference purposes. So this slide shows the water rates for a one inch meter, which typically covers all of our residential properties, single family properties. As you can see here, Terrell, this isn't working again. The Proposition 218 approved rate is 39.49. The adopted rate for fiscal year 1819 is $35.84. In addition, there's a volumetric charge. So for water, you have a base allocation and then any usage over that base allocation, you're charged a volumetric charge. And so the Proposition 218 approved amount is $1.98 and council set the rate at $1.84. For perspective, this table shows the breakdown of the city's current water meters by size. So almost 95% of the city's meters are one inch or less. So that includes residential, it would include some landscape meters for commercial properties. It would also include your smaller commercial properties, whether it's an office building or something like that, that has, tends to have lower water usage. So the monthly water bill is calculated. Again, you have a base rate plus the amount over the base allocation times the flow rate. So for example, if you use 20 HCF, which one HCF is 748 gallons, your monthly bill would be your base rate of $35.84 for a one inch meter, plus 5 HCF times that volumetric rate of $1.84 to get a total of $45.04. So here's the graph showing the water rate history for a one inch water service over the last 13 years. So again, you can see that the 2016-
Sorry. Can you go back to that monthly water bill calculation? I feel like I'm looking at my cell phone bill and I'm not understanding some of the expenses. So walk, walk me through like I'm just, I am brand new, but I really never had a water bill before. So if I got my water bill, how am I going to interpret this?
Okay, so assuming that you have a one inch water service-
Okay.
For a one inch water service for $35.84, you can use up to 15 HCF per month. And so one HCF equals 748 gallons. If you use over that base allocation, you're going to be charged a volumetric charge of $1.84 per additional HCF.
Okay.
So if you use 20 HCF, you're going to have your base rate of $35.84, which includes that 15 units.
Right.
And then you're going to be charged an additional five units of water at $1.84.
So let's say I don't go over my 15. I'm going to be charged 35.84?
Yes. So regardless if you use one HCF or you use 15 HCF in a month, you're going to pay $35.84.
So if I have a leak that I have no clue about, my-
You're screwed.
It's a charge, right? So then I still, let's say my water bill now $200 and I've been conserving water all the time. So how do we remediate? Maybe that's a different topic at a, but I'm, that's usually the question that we get asked the most. I, I think most people that, when I talk to them out in their homes, it was the water bill.
Yeah. I would say if somebody has a water leak that they weren't aware of, where they're using a large volume of water and they're surprised when they get their bill, I encourage them to call finance to discuss that with finance. They can go back through the history and see, you know, is this, is this person really had an issue or has this been their common usage and they're just trying to, you know, get out of paying their bill? But a lot of times finance will listen to, we'll go, the history, they'll also go out and check the meter to make sure there's not an issue with the meter. For many of our meters, they're called profile head readers. And so we can go out and actually download the usage by, by time of day. So you can see when the issue occurred. But I will say the, the great thing is we have the project to convert to cellular water meters. And so customers will be able to go online and look at their water usage in real time. And then there'll also be leak detection on there. So you can set it up that if a leak, if it seems like there's a leak that's occurred, not only can our staff be notified of that, but then also the customer can go online and see that there's perhaps a leak.
Thank you for explaining it so, scaling it down to basic knowledge. I appreciate that.
Diana?
Yeah.
Okay. Years ago, when something like that came up, we were able to credit them if it was a whoops, one time we were able to credit them. But on the Prop 218, I was told we weren't allowed to do that anymore. We're, we're doing that again?
So Prop 218 is different. You're not allowed to do supplement rates for low income folks or senior citizens. It's that type of thing. So through Prop 18, 18, you have to make sure that the costs are equitable to all classes. And so what we're talking about is if they have a leak and it's a situation where it really is, you know, out of their control and it's found quickly, finance has credited those, those customers bills because it, you know, was outside of, it might've been outside of their control. But I will say we'll have customers that call and say, oh, I have a leak, but then you look at their history and no, that's been their water consumption for many years. And so then you really have to do more investigation to say, did they really have a leak for three years or, you know, is this something that just occurred? And so you have to do more investigation.
Okay. So, so for example, they got a $35 bill, water for 15 months. And we read the meter on the first and then the next, the first of next month, it went to $200 and they didn't even realize it. They're late, like they had a urinal sticking and they didn't realize it. So we would, on a single family dwelling, they make the repairs, we will, we will credit them the difference now or majority or?
It's really, it's really a case by case basis. And so they need to call into finance and discuss it with the customer service manager and they evaluate on a case by case basis.
Thank you.
Okay, so water rate history. So the last rate study was adopted in 2016. The one prior to that was adopted in 2011. Again, you can see that period of time where the rates weren't covered by an approved rate study. And so, you know, through Proposition 218, you can't just, you can't just increase rates just because you want to. So you have to go through the process to identify, you have, show your methodology, identify what the, you're proposing for the rates, and then go through a protest procedure that your customers can do a majority protest to stop the rate increase. In both of these situations, we did not have a majority protest and so the rate increases were approved by council. With the 2011 rate study, it didn't anticipate the drought. And so once the drought occurred in 2013, we were, we're kind of behind the curve there in that we didn't have a mechanism to account for those lost revenues. And so you see that through the 2016 rate study is that we were then making up revenues through these, you know, significant rate increases. So one thing I would like to note is that as part of the 2016 adopted water and wastewater ordinances, council included language that provides for council to review rates on an annual basis as part of the fiscal year budget review process prior to July 1st implementation of any increases for each year. So council also retained the authority to set rates by resolution, provided that they do not exceed the rates approved through the Proposition 218 process. So what does that mean? That means in May of this year, as part of your budget study session, I'm going to come before you and I'm going to recommend rates for this next fiscal year. With it being a new council, it would be great to have direction from council in terms of potential scenarios that you would like to see. You know, scenarios that I see is you have, what happens if you have zero rate increase? What happens if you go forward with the rate increase that was proposed in May of 2018? Or what happens if you do a, somewhere in between to cover kind of your, your inflation adjustment? And so at some point, you know, council can, can provide no direction and I'll come forward with a recommendation or there are options for council to provide direction in terms of different, different scenarios to present at that May budget study session so that you can have the information necessary to make the decision for the rates for fiscal year 1920. So this graph shows the revenue requirements with dark blue representing O and M expense, operation maintenance expenses, red representing debt service, and then green and yellow representing capital expenses. So what's important about this is if you look at fiscal year 19 right here, if we were to project that across, if we were to not do anything from this date forward and just keep the rates as they are today and project this across, you would see for a few years, we would be able to cover, again, the O and M and the debt service, but it would impact projects. And so that's something that council will need to provide direction on in terms of those rates, like I mentioned previously, cover O and M, debt service and projects. And so, you know, moving forward with that, just to have an understanding of the direction that council wants to go. And then I spoke about this briefly earlier, this low income water rate assistance. A draft report was issued earlier this month that talks about taxes on personal and business income, fees on water bottles or alcohol. We're part of the regional water authority and the regional water authority is preparing a letter response to submit to this report. Prior to that, there was discussions about, you know, taking a dollar of everyone's rates to put into this low income rate assistance program. As you can see from our rates, I mean, we've, we, we need to utilize every penny that we have. And so to have a dollar go to a state fund for low income water rates, while there's definitely a need within our jurisdiction, it's difficult to take that money away from our rates when that wasn't part of the calculation when we were going through that 218 process. So existing wastewater rates, different than water rates in that single family and multi family pay flat rate. So it doesn't matter how much water they use, they just pay a flat rate. However, commercial, so non residential, they pay a base rate, just a base rate regardless of how much water they use. But then in addition to that, they have a volumetric charge and that volumetric charge is based upon their metered water usage. So here's the graph showing the wastewater rates for a single family development. You can see this last year, council actually adopted rates less than the Proposition 218 amount. And then in May of 2018, we were projecting rates that would continue to be less than the Proposition 218 approved amount. And then for our industrial customers, they are based upon their actual impact on the plant. So you have volume, total suspended solids, and then BOD. And then for, so this is how Sun Suite, Valley Fine Foods, this is how they're charged. And then for septic haulers, there's a cost per gallon with a minimum charge of 400 gallons per dump. So our wastewater treatment facility is utilized a lot by our septic haulers for the region. So for a monthly wastewater bill calculation, here's an example for a commercial, C1 commercial, which is C1, C2, C3. It's based upon the strength of their wastewater. And so like for an office or something like that, very low strength versus a restaurant would be very high strength. So for a C1 example, their monthly bill is based upon the base rate and then the water use times the flow rate. So if they had monthly water usage of 100 HCF, you'd have the base rate of $52.96 plus 100 HCF times the volumetric rate of $2.09 to get a total bill amount of $261.96. And then again, similar to water, here is the rate history for wastewater, single family developments.
Can you go back one slide?
Sure.
Thanks. So the, the methodology there for the commercial that uses the, the flow rate of water for sewage, is that, is that common in the industry? Is that how, that's how it's done? Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Because again, it goes back to you want to make sure that you're being equitable in how the costs are being spread. And so you're looking at, when you look at the volume of flows coming into the plant and then spreading that out amongst the different classes, you want to make sure that you're accounting for, you know, a single family dwelling, for the most part, you can assume, make an assumption as to how much wastewater flow because you're not counting for irrigation or anything like that. So it's a pretty steady number. And so you, most agencies base, charge it based upon their water usage. So again, here's the graph showing the wastewater revenue requirements with the blue line being the projected under the 2016 proposed or approved rate study. So this is just to show a bill comparison for a single family dwelling based upon average consumption, so winter, annual, summer. So winter bill where you might use seven HCF because it's just your indoor use, their water bill would be $35.84. Their wastewater bill would be $52.96 for a total of $88.80. Under the Prop 218 approved amount, it would be $93.44. And then in the summer months where you would have a higher usage, that bill would, the water bill would increase to $52.40, giving a total bill of $105.36. So this, the purpose of this slide is just to show how much water consumption impacts the bill for a, a single family dwelling. So for, as I mentioned previously, for fiscal year 1920 rates, there will be options for council to consider at the budget study session. And then at that point in time, when we bring forward, we'd bring forward a resolution in June for council action to set the rates for fiscal year 1920. One, one point of contention, and I'm looking at Dale and the audience here, one point of contention has been the last two years when we have set the rates, they went into effect July 1st, which means that they apply to the June consumption numbers because we read the bill, we read the meter on the first of each year and then you receive your bill towards the end of that month. So when the rates go into effect on July 1st, it's actually utilizing June consumption. So that's been a, a little bit of a point of contention for some of our customers. So if there are no questions about rates, I'm going to move on to connection fees.
Through the mayor. Ms. Langley, how many, you gave us, you know, basically 95% of our connection for water was a 17,693, I think it was. How many sewer connections do we have that would be comparable to the single family residence? Is it 17,006?
No.
Is it 20,000? Is it 2,000?
So I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you that, I, don't quote me on this, I want to say it's about 11,000. But the reason being is that you have the entire former Hillcrest water area that's not in the city limits, that receives water, that does not receive sewer. And then also the Tierra Buena area receives water and not sewer. And so you have a large portion of the water customers that do not have, that do not benefit from sewer from the city.
Okay. Thank you. Can I get that number at some point in the future? Thank you.
Okay. Onto connection fees. So connection fees are designed to recover the capital costs of the treatment plants and backbone transmission and collection lines for water and wastewater. They increase July 1st of each year based upon the engineering news record construction cost index. 1st of each year based upon the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. These maps are very large, a little bit difficult to read, but these two maps represent the backbone infrastructure required to serve new development with water and wastewater in the future. The map on the left is the wastewater infrastructure plan developed as part of the 2006 wastewater system master plan. And the map on the right is from our recently completed water system master plan. So when we're calculating connection fees, we take these pipeline costs, the treatment plant costs to serve that new development, the, you know, for sewer, the lift stations for water, the tanks, you add up all of those costs divided by the number of equivalent dwelling units that you're going to have within the city to develop your connection So fees are due at the owner's option at either the issuance of building permit or a certificate of occupancy. So for water, the amount of fee shall be those in effect at the time of building permit issuance. For wastewater, the amount of fee shall be those in effect at the time the fees are paid. So building permit issuance or certificate of occupancy. So the reason I'm highlighting those two portions in red is we have a discrepancy. And so we will be bringing forward as part of a larger municipal code update for Public Works to make these consistent because the issue with the water portion is that the building permit may be issued and then it takes two years to finish the project. Well, in the meantime, your connection fees have increased, but they're still paying. They could come in and pay their fees at the time of certificate of occupancy, but pay it based upon when the building permit is issued. Versus wastewater, whenever they pay it is when the fee in effect at the time they pay is what's due. And so we'll be bringing forward as part of a larger municipal code update to correct these deficiencies. The other thing that's important to note is that the city does not provide an option for customers to finance connection fees over time, other than through an assessment district. So through an assessment district, customers can pay for the infrastructure and connection fees as part of their annual taxes. But there's not, if you have, you know, existing infrastructure and it's just a home that's adjacent to a water line where they want to connect to connection fees, they can't come in and make arrangements to pay payments on that over time. It has to be paid upfront. So again, the connection fee is the cost of the infrastructure to serve new development divided by the total equivalent dwelling units for build-out of the sphere of influence. For the water connection fee, it's based upon meter size. So as the meter size increases, so does the connection fee. And so for instance, a two-inch meter is based upon a maximum continuous flow rate of 100 gallons per minute versus a one-inch meter is based upon 25 gallons per minute. You can see that the corresponding connection fee is also four times as much as a one-inch meter. So waters, connection fees are very expensive. So if you need a four-inch connection, you're paying $267,000 for that connection. Again, that's, what that connection fee covers is their share of the water treatment plant and their share of that backbone infrastructure to get the water to their property. So it's been many years since the current connection fees were evaluated. With the recent completion of the water treatment plan and distribution system master plan, staff will be updating the water connection fee and bring options to council for consideration. The estimated cost of infrastructure to serve new development and build-out exceeds $360 And I've, I'd like to note, so with all of the legislation related to water usage and accounting for the reduction in per capita use, that was the main point of this master plan, is to go through and reevaluate the sphere of influence to say, okay, if you have this many properties using that much less water, what does that do to our infrastructure? It reduced the diameter of the pipeline significantly. It also reduced the number of storage tanks significantly. But even with that, you have a price tag of $360-plus So for wastewater connection fees, it's based upon residential versus non-residential units. So for a single-family dwelling, it's $7,000 per unit. For commercial industrial, it's based upon fixture units. And so you have, you know, through the plumbing code, you have different fixtures that have different fixture units. And so for instance, a wash basin, so a sink, is considered one fixture unit and a toilet is considered four fixture units. So if you have a bathroom in an office that has a toilet and a sink, they're going to pay a connection fee based upon five fixture units. And then we also have the West Yuba City Sewer Trunk Line Fee, which is an additional cost for properties located in the western portion of the sphere of influence. So again, with the completion of the water master plan, staff will be reevaluating the water connection fee and bring it to council for direction. Council recently also authorized staff to proceed with the wastewater master plan update. So once the wastewater master plan is completed, staff will also be reevaluating the wastewater connection fee to bring toward, forward to council for consideration as well. So any questions on connection fees? Okay, outside connections. So the city periodically receives requests for connection to water and/or wastewater from properties located outside of the city limits. I have to say, so during my time with the city, which I've worked with the city for 22 years, I've only see a handful of these requests come across. Typically what happens is you have a septic system that fails, and if they're within so many feet of a city sewer line, they're required to connect to city sewer. If their well fails, they're required to, if they're within so many feet of a water line, they're required to connect to city water. And in addition, the city occasionally receives requests from commercial or non-residential properties as well that want city water or sewer. So past practice, for many years, the city required property owners outside of the city limits to execute utility service connection agreements stating that the property could connect to city services and in exchange must waive their rights to protest future So the oldest utility service agreement that I can find electronically dates back to September 1980. And then I went through the agreements that we have in our electronic system, I found about 60 agreements, with the latest agreement dated 2004. So when you look at past practice, we don't have a written policy for how we deal with outside connections, with the exception, for a brief period in 2010 and in 2011, council adopted ordinances allowing all private well-water users of record within the city's water service area an opportunity to connect to city water without requiring utility service connection agreement. After 2011, the city had a large project to extend water to the west on Franklin Road to serve Franklin School. At the same time, water was provided to some subdivisions within that area. As part of that project, the city required annexation of those subdivisions. So options for council, and I want to note that I coordinated with, there was some previous question as to whether or not these utility service connection agreements were legal. Can you legally require somebody to waive their right to protest an annexation? And through working with the city attorney, found that they are. And so council has several options for moving forward with outside connections, which include, you could allow properties connect with no requirements, not recommended by staff. You could allow properties to connect with the execution of an agreement. This would require that the city attorney prepare an agreement for council reviews, council review and approval before we actually apply it to a property. Another option would be to require annexation prior to connection to city services. This option ensures that the city has full jurisdictional control over property that is receiving city services. However, this option is not generally preferred by property owners as there would likely be additional costs involved to go through the annexation process and would delay their connection to city services. So at council's direction, staff can bring this as an item for council discussion and consideration at a future council meeting.
Through the mayor. The tri-party agreement, which I do remember, is that transferable? So if I sell my house to Councilwoman Escondola, but she doesn't want to annex, can she fight that agreement?
Thank you, through the mayor. It depends on the terms of the agreement. Typically, these sorts of agreements are recorded and are a property interest. So any future buyer has noticed that there is this annexation requirement or they are receiving services from the city. So as long as it's a bona fide purchaser and they've done their research and done a title report like they typically do, anyone downstream of when that was recorded can't fight it. So it's there. There is a narrow exception for renters, less than 12 months. If you're a renter and you come in and you don't know and you're not anticipated to actually know under the law because you're only there for a short period of time, you usually don't do a title report when you rent, then the courts have said, under those circumstances, we won't enforce against the renters. But after about a year's time, it will be enforceable against all future property owners.
Okay, so any, is there, is it council's desire to bring this forward as a future discussion item?
I would definitely say so. Diana, it's very important that we get that hammered Does she need, or does he need three head nods?
Just the mayor acting a notice alone is enough.
Tell my ex-wife that.
All right, any additional questions on outside connections? Okay, we're in the home stretch here. I'm getting into capital improvement program. So the capital improvement program, commonly referred to as the CIP, is a five-year plan for the maintenance and expansion of public facilities and infrastructure. The CIP is updated every year as part of the budget process. So how's the CIP developed? So it's developed several ways. You have the water and wastewater master plans, which I briefly discussed, in which you identify existing capital rehabilitation, replacement projects, and then also infrastructure to serve new development. You have operational needs identified by staff, and you have regulatory requirements. So current CIP projects for water include the Berry School Water Transmission Line, the cellular water replacement project, groundwater well abandonments, pressure surge relief facility is one of those projects that was identified through operations, water treatment plant electrical instrumentation and control system improvements, the harder water tanks coating, and the second groundwater well at the water treatment plant. So as I noted, the recently completed water treatment plan and distribution system master plan provides a recommendation for the CIP for the water treatment plant and distribution system. The master plan looks at a 20-year planning horizon to identify improvements and timing for the next 20 years. The current total estimated capital cost identified in the plan is over $100 million. So recommended key projects over just the next 10 years include supply improvements, which would be additional, basically that aquifer storage recovery well at the water treatment plant, minor modifications at the low-lift pump station, water treatment plant improvements, which would include chemical addition, rehabilitating the conventional filtration system, high-service pump station, and electrical skater improvements. The booster pump station tank improvements include significant rehabilitation of the Garden Highway, Row Avenue, San Brandon tanks, and then minor works such as coatings at the other reservoirs within the system. And then the pipeline replacement portion assumes replacing pipelines in the distribution system at a rate of $3 million per year, with one of the goals being to improve fire flows. So again, I mentioned previously, the current rate structure provides $1 million annually for pipeline replacement. Over the last 10 years, the city has received about $22 million in grants for water. So that includes stimulus water meter retrofit project in which we were able to put meters within the former Hillcrest water service area to ensure that the entire city was metered, the groundwater to surface water conversion, a raw water intake and pump station improvements, low-lift pump station improvements, the Prop 84 water line extension project, which was to get that water line to Franklin School, the recent cellular water service meter installation grant, and then a second groundwater well at the water treatment plant, which is through the Bureau of Reclamation, which we're working on the funding agreement for that right now. Similarly for wastewater, current projects includes the wastewater treatment facility improvements, which was recently started, wastewater system master plan update, wastewater collection rehabilitation project, Stonegate Treatment Works demolition. I don't know if you are familiar with the Stonegate subdivision. It's out in the Tier Bueno area. They're on a very, very unique system. And one of the things that we need to do is demolish the treatment, the former treatment plant there. The wastewater treatment facility chlorine contact basin rehabilitation, and then the outfall diffuser replacement. Here is a table showing wastewater grants received over the last eight years. So you have the wastewater treatment facility improvements, downtown sewer replacement, and recycled water study for wastewater treatment facility. I would be very remiss if I didn't acknowledge Mandeeb Cho-Ham's efforts in a lot of these grants. He is tenacious when it comes to pursuing grants, and he really does an excellent job in trying to get money that we can utilize for projects that we've identified. So to recap, council will have several opportunities to provide input on items related to water and wastewater. We have the rates. The current study provides two more years of approved increases. And staff, this is important, so staff would normally begin working on the next rate study in late 2019, early 2020, as the current rate study period ends June 30th, 2021. So rate study takes a significant amount of time to go through and collect all the financials, update the rate models. And what takes a lot of time is coming up with the different options to present as part of that rate study to see what council wants to move forward with in terms of a Proposition 218 process. And so staff will need direction from council related to that. Connection fees, with the recent completion of the water master plan, staff will be bringing forward options for connection fees. Outside connections, so receive direction tonight to bring forward that for consideration. The capital improvement program, the fiscal year 1920 CIP will be coming for council in May and June for consideration. And then the municipal code updates, in which we'll be bringing a more comprehensive package for several updates that need to take place for Public Works. So with that, are there any questions?
Go ahead. Diana, the Stonegate property cleanup, by any chance on the cleanup of that, was the city thinking about selling the property to help cover our costs?
We would bring that to council for their direction in terms of disposal of that property. There's been many discussions in terms of what to do with that property, one of which being to sell. Another discussion has been related to turning that into a little like pocket park for the subdivision. So it would be, council would need to have discussion about what to do with that property.
Okay, thank you, Diana.
Diana, thank you very much for that presentation, very detailed. And I do want to provide you with some direction, if I have concurrence here regarding your water and wastewater rates. You mentioned three options. I think if we put some effort and work into proposing three options, one on each side of the spectrum, one down the middle, perhaps that will offer a framework for some discussion amongst us. And if we have to hybridize a little bit, back and forth, one way or the other, I think that would be a good way to go about that, and I would appreciate that. Same thing with the connection fees. Outside connections, you already have three options laid out there, which are good. And I have a question on the capital improvement program. There's a slide, the recommended projects out for 10 years, the $60 million-plus dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know how much, if any, of that could possibly be funded by grants? We have our eyeball on any grants to help supplement that 63 million? Is that basically a wish
Well, if it's related to where you can reduce your water usage or you can reduce your energy consumption, there are grants out there.
Okay.
For a lot of these projects, they don't necessarily fall under that category. Sometimes you can get creative in terms of if it's a pipeline that's leaking, that you can show that you're reducing your water loss and you're reducing your overall energy costs because you're not having to account for pumping out that volume of water. So there could be some opportunity. There could also be some opportunity for low-interest loans through the state revolving fund. But it's really dependent kind of upon what's happening at that time and where the emphasis is. is at the state and federal level.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Good.
Through the mayor, Ms. Langley, the other issue that we need to take in consideration is the governor's budget proposal. You mentioned bottled water and such. Part of that, he's also indicated he wants to put a supplemental tax on your water bill as it is. So we're looking at potentially our water bills going up anyway because of the state. That is to help mitigate the cost for underfunded, and I can't remember the exact word that was in the budget, but struggling water districts. If the government's, if the governor's proposal goes through, we're going to be at the state's mercy on that, but do you have any indication that we may qualify to get some funds back to help any of these projects if he taxes our water bills and he taxes bottled water?
Yes, so with that recent report that was issued earlier this month in regard to that low-income rate assistance proposal, it's interesting because they specifically identified Yuba City, and so the threshold that they're using is 200% of the poverty level, the federal poverty level. What they said in that study is that Yuba City, 81% of our customers meet that threshold. So if they were to use that methodology, then there's a very large portion of our customer base that could potentially qualify for a low-income rate assistance program. But I haven't seen any language specific to his to know what the threshold would be, but I, any type of low-income rate assistance program, I would think that there's a good portion of our population that could qualify for that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Nothing further. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I almost forgot. Spencer wanted to make a quick clarification. Please.
Thank you, Diana. Spencer Morrison, accounting manager. I just wanted to mention, directed to Councilman Shaw, regarding the cost allocation plan true-up, we do not do a true-up, but we do base our cost allocation plan on last year's actuals. So it's not a wag, but it is a year behind. So I thought I would try to give you that clarification, so you didn't leave thinking that we were using budgeted numbers or projected numbers for the cost allocation plan.
Yeah. Through the mayor, Spencer, thank you, and I figured for the sake of the evening that I appreciate you stepping up, but this will be a conversation as we go forward that we will figure out, and I do appreciate your input, and I look forward to sitting down with you further.
Thank you. And then, with your permission, just for further clarification on leaks and how finance handles leaks, you could hear Councilman Cardos is kind of trying to get clarification on how leaks are handled, and it's very, it's not very often, while time to time, there is, you know, the charges for consumption is written off, it's pretty rare that that's the case, because the way finance views it is that the cost has already been incurred and by the system. And so if the homeowner who's having a maintenance problem in their house, in their property, isn't responsible, then it makes all the other rate payers responsible for that cost. And so we take that very seriously, and it's not a very common thing for us to saddle the rest of the rate payers with one property owner's maintenance issues.
Thank you, Spencer. Thank you, Spencer. All right. Nothing further? All right. With that being said, we're going, it's 6:53, according to iPhone here, we're going to take a 20-minute break, we'll come back at 10 after 7, give us a chance to test out our wastewater treatment facility, I think. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll call us back to order. We have one comment from Diana, she wants a clarification from her presentation.
So the question about how many single-family dwelling sewer customers do we have? It's approximately 12,700, and we have a total of about 14,700 sewer customers. So single-family dwellings, about 12,700, and multifamily is about 1,000.
Good. Thank you again, Diana. All right, now we have agenda item number four, AB 1600 impact fees presented by Darren Gale. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So Darren Gale, interim development services director. So I just want to introduce this item. We actually have Victor Erzick from Goodwin Consulting, who's actually going to give us the presentation. So briefly, the city on a quarterly basis holds a luncheon with our builders and developers. We call it our Builders-Developers-Engineer Luncheon. We did send out an email to that group letting them know about the meeting tonight. We also let our Realtors Association know about the meetings tonight. I don't think that the Realtors actually heard about it tonight until about 4:30, when they sent out the email, but we let them know as soon as the agenda was posted. And so we have a number of folks here in the office, here in the council chambers, that are very interested, and I know that will speak. Just today, I received email from Cal Takar that he could not be here, so he apologized. He's a local builder and developer, and I know I was also provided some additional information from Inner West that I just saw in my email, so I apologize. I don't have him here in my presentation, but as it goes on, I did make a copy of it so that I can share. So this evening, this presentation is very specifically about AB 1600 impact fees. So you heard about one development cost in sewer and water connection fees. There's also county impact fees, and there are school impact fees, which is under another law called SB 50. So this evening, we've asked Victor to come give a presentation from Goodwin Consulting Group. Victor's actually the person that led our last impact fee comprehensive update, so he'll be able to give the history to the council of, you know, since he started working on this back in 2007, when it was updated. Throughout his presentation, if you have any questions, please stop him. I can come up and answer any questions, Diana. Any of, obviously, staff could answer any questions that you might have, but at this time, I'll turn it over to Victor, and then at the end, I can come back and help answer any very specific items that Victor might not be able to respond to. Thanks.
Good evening, members of the council, city staff, and members of our audience. Again, my name is Victor Erzick. I'm with Goodwin Consulting Group, and we prepared your last fee study that was updated in 2007. And I'm going to give you a general overview of development impact fees, as well as a specific overview of your development impact fee program. And this is an overview of what I'm going to discuss, the Mitigation Fee Act, which is commonly referred to as AB 1600. I'm going to go over a history of the Yuba City fee program, going to go over a general discussion of how the fees are calculated, and then specifically discuss the city's fee program, the facilities and the fees for the various categories. I'm going to talk about, or present a fee comparison of the city's fees to other cities' development impact fees, and I'm going to go over the fee implementation process as So the Mitigation Fee Act governs development impact fees. It was passed by the state in 1987. One of the requirements is that fees are reasonably related to development impact on public facilities, also that fees are roughly proportional to impact, to the impact that development projects create. Those two statements, reasonably related and roughly proportional, were specific statements in federal court cases related to exactions, which development impact fees are. And what it basically says is you can't come up with fees arbitrarily. There has to be a methodology that specifically ties in the amount of fee to a certain type of development, whether it be residential, a commercial office, or industrial, and you have to demonstrate that nexus between the fee amount and the type of development. Fees cannot fund existing deficiencies, so if you have a deficiency in a certain facility, you can't expect that new development will cure that deficiency. And lastly, the Mitigation Fee Act prescribes accounting rules for the fee program where on an annual basis and also on a five-year basis, you have to demonstrate what was done with the fees, how much was collected, how much was expended, that type of thing. So fees, impact fees fund capital facilities. They can't fund operation and maintenance costs, and they're used to mitigate the impacts that development creates on capital facilities. So whether it's parks, roads, various government buildings, that's what mitigation impact fees pay for. The city's fee program was last updated in 2007, and since 2007, the only increases had to do with annual inflation adjustments. The fee program is a citywide program, so if you have any annexations into the city, those areas are also subject to development impact fees, and impact fees are typically paid at building permit issuance. So history on the city's fee program, the first impact fees were collected in the city in 1990. In 1997, the city updated those fees, and again in 2001, and the 2001 fee update, those were phased over a three-year period. They were updated again in 2007, and again, the city phased the fee increases over a three-year period. In 2007, the city also enacted infill fees, and those were adopted at 50% of the regular fee rates, and those applied to transportation facilities, let's see, I think parks, and and community facilities. Thank you. In 2014, the city adopted the animal shelter fee, and in 2015, the infill fee program was expanded to all the fees except for the levy fee, and also updated the scope of what counts as infill development. And so why would a public agency update its fee programs? A lot of times, public agencies usually don't update them for five or more years, and so in the meantime, some of the facilities may not be applicable, or they may have been funded. The fees may not reflect what the current construction costs are to construct certain projects, and so fee programs, facilities are typically added, removed, or changed in scope when you update a fee program. And facilities' costs are updated, land costs are updated, sometimes the boundaries are updated if there are annexations to a public agency boundary, and in general, the fees are revised based on those changes, and sometimes we have new impact fees added based on new facilities to the program. So for the fee calculation methodology, this is, yes?
Through the mayor, the slide before said we implemented in 2007, and you had some timelines on there in regards to the five-year audits, where I don't see those. Were those performed?
I don't know. Those were not done by us.
Just as a point of clarification, councilmen, what do you mean by five-year audits?
It says that annually and every five years, according to the presentation, that there would be a review of the impact fee program?
I do not, I think what you see is what you see, is how it's been implemented over the years, unless anyone from city staff knows otherwise. I don't believe there's been a, you know, so let me, as a point of clarification, in terms of use of funds, those funds are audited on an annual basis, and additionally, we do an annual review through the finance department to make sure that any monies that aren't used are identified for what use they will be used for. And why is that important? Because there's a requirement that Victor may mention tonight, because he knows this much better than I do frankly, because he does it for a living, that you use the money within five years. That said, if you have a certain project for which you're accruing funds, let's say a major interchange, and you have 10 million, and it's a $20 million project, you can accrue those monies over the course of numerous years beyond five years, with the recognition that it requires additional years beyond five to fund. So there is an annual report that comes out usually in the November-December timeframe that accounts for that. But if the question of the audit here, meaning if there's a review and evaluation of what the fees are, what you see is what we've done.
Okay.
I believe in 2011, we brought forward the road portion of the impact fee to council because we reduced the right-of-way costs, and then we also updated the cost for asphalt and materials, and that resulted, if I recall correctly, in a decrease in the impact fee at that time.
I just wanted to, it was the, it's a previous slide that reflects in your presentation. There you go. The last bullet. That's the reason for the question.
Okay. So we do, we absolutely do that annually. I don't, you know, it's odd to think that it would say annually and every five years if you're doing it annually. So we, I don't know if it's one or the other, or and, but we do it annually.
Well, the five-year accounting has to do with whether the money that is in accounts is still needed, and that needs to be demonstrated.
So that would be, I did answer that question. So I guess we've answered both then. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify.
Through the mayor, so are, so the monies that are allocated within that five-year period, they have that five-year period to utilize the funds, and if they don't utilize the funds, then what happens?
Well, you have to demonstrate that you still need them. So if a project has a longer period where you're expending the funds, you're going to have to demonstrate that you still need those funds.
And how would they demonstrate that?
Basically, you know, through a report saying that, you know, this is a timeline of the project, and although we haven't expended the money in the account, we still do need it based on
And who approves that?
That's brought to the council.
How often do these occur?
Well, the annual reports are basically looking at the money, the fee money that came in, and what it has been expended on. The five-year reports are just sort of a justification that the program and the money that is in the accounts is still needed.
So we should be having a report soon, in other words?
Yes, every five years.
The annual report I mentioned, I believe I mentioned, comes in November, December. So yes, you'll receive that report. It will be the one that the council adopted in either November or December. So it may not have been your council, it may have been the previous council, but that report is fresh in terms of the last three months. Furthermore, you have an annual audit that was just complete as well, that contains additional information.
Okay. Because I haven't seen the report, so I'm trying to figure out if we are doing this annually, so those approved five years ago, we should have some sort of progress of they're on target or not target, correct?
Correct.
And so that's the unisys of my question. So the progress of these, who's reviewing the progress, and as those are reported to us, is that Darren doing that? Who is doing that?
It's, once I say it again, I'll get you the report. It was just adopted by the council. It was the finance department that puts it together, because they're the keeper of the money once it comes into the city. And yeah, it captures all, everything, and the council reviews it, and the council approves it.
I think probably by the end of this process, we're kind of early before we start doing the questions, a lot of detailed questions, but at the end of this, I think it'd be appropriate to perhaps get a copy to us again, if it was done previous to this new council taking their chairs, just to get an update, an overview, one or two pages of the status of every fund, and then the due date for the five-year review.
Okay.
And does that go to you, Steve? I can't, I can't I can't, I can't direct him to do anything.
You could, anything the council mentions, we're, staff's gonna take care of.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, uh, so...
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted clarification, a little bit further on this. I think the spirit of this, and you're the expert, so correct me if I'm wrong, was the annual accounting, but it was a review every five years, and this should have started back in 1990, correct?
Um, yeah, so, so five years, so, so in 95, for example, would be the first five-year period that you want to look back and see, look at your accounts to see if, if the money that's still there is needed.
So every 10 and five years, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 on up, we should have been doing a review justification of those projects are still feasible, redirect the funds into newer projects, but that has not been done to this point, we've just been having the annual accounting, but it's a fixed five years, it's not a rolling five, correct?
Um, that, that's right, it's, it, well, it's a five-year period is what the law says. So, so, uh, once you, uh, put money into the fee funds, at that point, that's when it, it starts, that, the year one, and then five years later, you, you do the, the five-year report.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, so the methodology to calculate the fees, and this is sort of a, um, high-level, um, uh, review of that methodology. First, uh, the future development, uh, in the city i- is determined. And agencies, um, will either use the, the build-out of, say, the general plan, or they'll use a timeframe of 10, 20, 30 years. In this case, for the city, it was, uh, build-out of the sphere of influence. And so, um, that was used in the city's, uh, fee program. Second step is to identify the ca- the capital facilities needed to serve new development. Third step, determine the allocation factors to spread the facility costs. And this is where nexus is developed, uh, between the impacts from development onto facilities. So, so allocation factors could be, for example, trip, trip generation for, uh, transportation projects and the transportation fee calculation, um, per capita for parks, because parks are, are determined based on, uh, acres per thousand residents. So those are, uh, two examples of allocation factors. And then, uh, step four, include costs for facilities that benefit new development. So again, if there are any costs that, in, in the capital improvement program, that are there to, uh, fix an existing deficiency, for example, a, a roadway, um, that is under capacity, that could not be funded with, uh, money from new development. Number five, subtract funds from other sources, like, from, uh, expected money coming from, um, the, the federal government or the state government. That money would be subtracted from the total cost to come up with a net, uh, amount to fund through the fee program. Uh, next, allocate facility costs to new development based on the allocation factors. So again, the allocation factors, again, come in to establish that nexus between the impact from, from different types of development, uh, to the impact that they create. Seven, calculate the fees then, uh, based on, on a residential unit or a per-building square foot for non-residential development. And so here are, uh, the different, uh, fee categories for Yuba City's, uh, fee program. Uh, roadway fee, uh, parks and recreation fee, police fee, fire fee, the civic center fee, corporate, uh, corporation yard fee, library fee, the flood control fee, and the animal control, uh, fee. And so, uh, for the road fee, um, I'm showing the, the fee rates in 2007, and what they currently are, uh, for a single-family unit, and then the increase, uh, over that period. Uh, roadway facilities, uh, improvements, uh, in, in this fee category totaled approximately 350 million. And, uh, this fee, uh, was calculated by, uh, the traffic consultant, Fear and Peers. Uh, next fee is for parks and rec. As you can see, uh, for a single-family unit in 2007, the fee was calculated to be $6,160. It's currently $7,650. Uh, that's an increase of 24%. And again, this was all, uh, annual, uh, inflation adjustments, as opposed to revising the CIP. Uh, the facilities included in, uh, in this program include, uh, park improvements and land at, at, uh, three acres per thousand residents, includes open space improvements and land at two acres per thousand residents, uh, two community centers, two aquatic centers, and vehicles. For the police fee, uh, you see the, the fee rates in 2007 and 2019. Uh, facilities included, uh, a 69,000 square foot police station, and this would replace the existing station. Uh, land costs associated with that station, uh, patrol vehicles and police equipment. For the fire fee, uh, the fire facilities include, uh, fire station one, two, and seven expansions, fire station four relocation, a new fire station in the southwest sphere of influence, a training facility, fire trucks and vehicles and equipment. Uh, civic center fee, uh, facilities include a civic center building, vehicles, and IT infrastructure. Corporation yard fee, facilities include a corporate, a corporation yard building, storage facilities, land, vehicles, and equipment. For the library fee includes, uh, 31,940 square foot library building, the land associated with that, and also books. The flood control fee includes levy improvements. Animal control fee is for animal control building. And so this is the total, uh, fees. Uh, for 2007, total amount, uh, for a single-family residential unit is $23,386. Today, it's $29,490, and that's a 26% increase. And so here we have a fee comparison to other cities for a single-family residential unit. Um, and one thing to, to keep in mind here is, development impact fees are just one financing mechanism, there are others such as community facility districts, which issue bonds, you have assessment districts also issue bonds. And so we're looking at just one, uh, uh, financing mechanism. And so it's not necessarily apples to apples when you look at other cities, because they could be using other financing mechanisms, which would then reduce their impact fees. So, so, um, so you need to keep that in mind. And so, uh, first column is for Yuba City, and there's that $29,490.
Question real quick, sir, if you don't mind, before you get too deep into that?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Through the mayor, uh, I know, um, and maybe the city manager can help here too, the, uh, the city does have CFDs. Um, and, and those would be stacked on top of these fees as well?
So we have, uh, so the CFDs we have are CFDs for services. Uh, we do not, we have not historically structured capital facilities, CFDs. And so the CFDs for services are paid for, uh, by the citizens when they move in. And just for a point of clarification, uh, the CFDs you're talking about are also inclusive of capital facilities? And the reason that, when I say apples to app, what I'm thinking apples to apples, rather, is your impact fee money goes toward capital, and for the benefit of the public, what does capital means? It means, you know, the hard infrastructure, it doesn't go towards services and supplies or operations. Um, it goes toward a, a physical structure such as this. And so the, the community facilities district in similar fashion is structured to raise the necessary funds to fund the hard, uh, maybe a sewer transfer line or a water distribution main. Um, so the CFDs you're talking about are capital?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So that's something that we as a city can look to. So for example, if the council looked at these impact fees, say, well, they're really high, uh, there might be the alternative where the impact fee goes down, the community facilities district fee goes up, and that the two together still achieve the same outcome that the council desires.
Yeah. Okay, so, so looking at, uh, the cities here, uh, I've included Lincoln, Roseville, Folsom, West Sacramento, and Elk Grove. Um, Lincoln's fee, uh, again, this is for a single-family residential unit, is 13,230, so that's $16,260 less than, uh, Yuba City's fee. Uh, Roseville is, uh, at 17,278. Uh, and again, with Roseville, they have a lot of, uh, zones. And so what, what we did is, is take an average of, of the zones here. So, uh, some zones may be higher than others in, in Roseville, um, but what, what we're looking at here are the average of the different fee categories. Uh, and there, so the average is 12,213 less than, uh, Yuba City's current fee. Uh, Folsom is at 19,710, so again, that's less than Yuba City. West Sacramento is at 32,710, which is about 3,200 more than Yuba City. And Elk Grove is at 40, almost 43,000 per unit, and that's $13,410. And there's a visual represent, representation of that. So, so Yuba City's...
How did you decide on comparing them to these cities?
Um...
Is there, is there already a standard for that?
I was trying to get something i- in the local area, um, with, uh, a fairly close, uh, population to the city. Elk Grove, of course, is, it has a much higher population, um, but I was trying to get something, uh, similar in terms of, uh, population and size.
So Woodland or other municipalities wouldn't be closer to that?
Yeah, yeah, and, and I, I actually found out that, uh, council wanted to see, uh, fee comparisons and, just recently, so I tried to put together, uh, what, what I had. Um, I, I can update this i- if need be.
Because you mentioned that the fees, some of these fees that you're comparing them to does not, is not inclusive to almost, maybe apples to apples is more like an apple to an orange, or something to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, the best kind of comparison would be to look at all the financing components, that, that's a more extensive job to look at. For example, are there CFDs that are paying for certain facilities? Or are there assessment districts? Or are developers donating, uh, dedicating land, uh, through Quimby as opposed to, to, including the, the, the price of the land into a fee? So there are, there are, uh, different things to look at, you know, to try to make it more, more comparable.
Were you gonna add, Darren?
So just to add, we tried to make this simplified. Talk about AB 1600 fees. If we add all of it, we could be here for a couple hours, for example, and, and I think it's, it would be great for another councilman if you want. So for example, Roseville, they just recently, uh, published a study that talked about the full impacts, uh, of the cost of doing development in Roseville, and on average, they're $72,285 per door. So their impact fee, that you might hear, hey, they're in, because I think, you know, what I hear is developers coming to us and saying, hey, your impact fee is $16,000 more than the city of Lincoln. And, and this, that's, that's what's being presented. In order to take that full idea of what each community charges with all of the other types of financing they use, um, it takes a lot of time, we can use what's out there, which Roseville, like I said, they've recently published a study, and so I pulled it, I've read it, so I kind of know what they have. But just to put into perspective, Roseville's impact fee up here is 17,000. Their total cost, according to them, on average, is $72,285. But that includes development impact fees, processing fees, plan area fees, school impact fees, and developer contributions, which sometimes are included as part of the development agreement. Um, so, so that's why it takes, and each plan area is different in each community.
So even, even that, Darren, the 72 grand from Roseville, that gets more for that, uh, person building that home than what we have listed here?
Yes.
That includes more?
Yeah, so, and, and they have a high of 92,000 and a low of 64,000. To give you an idea of what, if you were developing in Roseville today, in a plan area, you could be paying somewhere between 65 and 93,000.
And the 65 would be close to what we're representing here by 30?
Well, so their school fees...
What would our equitable number be, do you have any idea?
Uh, yeah, so I'm just gonna throw up a very round number, 50 to 55,000.
50 to 55 versus 62, you said?
Yeah.
64, okay.
Uh, and you know what? The nice thing is, we have a couple home builders here. For example, uh, uh, we have Inner West, they can tell us exactly what it costs. She provided me some information for, uh, Buick County today, uh, that I'll send, uh, by email. Also, I received information from Cal-Tacar, from Crown Development, who provided me what Winters is. So he said, for a project he had in Yuba City, he was looking at about 45,000 a door, and Winters was 42. Uh, like I said, it, it just depends on the plan area.
Right.
Which jurisdiction, and it also, it can change here, depending on where you are with drainage, right? Are you part of Gilseizer or Live Oak? Uh, so each area can be different. Some cases, it might be a huge amount, some cases, it might be minimal.
All right, thank you.
And then, as a follow-up on the impact fees, uh, we will get that report, but I can tell you, on November 20th, the council did adopt, uh, a report, and as part of that report on an annual basis, they've been making the findings that are required of the five-year reports, but they've been doing that annually. I don't know how many years that's been, but we'll make sure and have a copy of that provided to the council members. But that happened on November 20th.
I, I think for the, um, to make an ed-, uh, fully educated, just, you know, um, understanding of what you're presenting to us, I, I would really, you know, mayor, prefer that we would have actual comparisons, not perhaps there's this, and this, and that, that we truly don't know what the impact fees, because if we're talking about AB 1600, I, I really like to have, what is it comparable to another city? Because at this moment, I'm, I'm hearing two different, or five different answers.
Counselor, that's a good question, so what I can tell you is, these are comparable to AB 1600 fee studies. The problem is, is they add other things.
Is, is the other thing, and that's, I think what we're looking for, 1600 is one way to obtain money, but if we're talking, if we're up here to try to make a decision, it's important that we have, well, literally apples to apples, I don't want to be cliche, but otherwise, we're kind of misled, and, and more importantly, the public is misled by thinking, holy moly, $16,000 more than Lincoln, and they stop right there, and then we get the phone calls. Which is fine, but it's important that we all, everybody, um, literally know what, what do we provide, and what would a, another city such as Lincoln charge for the same exact thing? I realize that's a heavy lift, but it's important we have that. Thank you, Darren.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, the question I have in regards to your chart here is you've, you've chosen a better sample than I saw in the previous report that we got at 3 o'clock this afternoon, okay? But there's one common thread I see through this. Lincoln, thriving community, Roseville, thriving community, Folsom, West Sac, and even Elk Grove are all thriving, they all have a higher median income. So, the people living in those areas can of course afford a higher, uh, median-priced house. Looking back at what these allocations are coming from, or for, you know, animal control, we have an agreement with Sutter County, going back to a library fee, um, just to hit some points, we have a great Sutter County library. So, looking at some of these issues, do we have, you know, questions come to mind, do we have this money stockpiled from the last 20 years that we've been collecting these fees to do these projects? And then, how do we take into consideration the fact that our residents and the median income, as we heard in the last presentation, we were 80-plus percent below the 200% of the, the national poverty level? How can we charge rates that are close to thriving municipalities that have much higher median income, um, to our, to our Yuba City? You know, one of the keys to fixing our previous problem that we had tonight was more development, more people living here, getting those. So, I agree with the mayor, we've got to have the full picture, and we've got to start figuring this out, because this is not apples to apples, and there's more to this story than what we have here. So can you elaborate on how this, you know, how do you take in consideration the median income, and when you're looking at this, or do you just ignore it completely?
Oh no, not at all, I mean, you can't sell homes i- if you're, if you're pricing your, your residents, uh, out of the market. So I mean, the fees have to be adjusted, and the to- total financing package, you know, the developers will tell you, you know, that have to be within a certain percentage, uh, you know, of, of the home value. If, if, if it exceeds it, then you can't build. And so, you know, that's why, wh- when I say that, you know, we're not looking at apples to apples here, you know, you have to look at the, the total picture, you know, of how much debt i- is also out there, uh, on the land, you know, either through an assessment district or, or community facility district. district or, or community facility district. And, um, you know, evaluate, uh, the, the total financial picture as opposed to just, just impact fees.
All right, one more question, if I may? Probably, a few more. On the library impact fees, either for our city manager or for Darren, is this the money that we're collecting on behalf of the county?
No.
It's not?
No, we don't collect, uh, we collect, um, the county has established fees, the city has established fees.
Okay.
Um, anything you're seeing up here are city-specific fees. Uh, so the question, the leading question, the next question that council's, because we've had this library fee for, you know, probably twenty years. Why?
Yeah.
Um, and it's because it was always envisioned that it would be part of the, there's a community center component, and that it would be part of a community center that may not be, you know, the cities, uh, to the, actually credit of old city managers, namely Jeff Foltz, he was always forward-looking and looking beyond what the city already has and seeing what the city could have in the future. And he thought, you know, this could be a library, that's not a conventional library where you're just having books, but it could be an electronic library, and it could be for the kids to come after school to, you know, to take advantage of the computers and a part of an overall community center. So it would be a city-centric component, uh, where I was born and raised, uh, as a city with a library. And to this day, it has a library. Uh, not a lot of cities do. Uh, Lincoln has a library, I believe, uh, there. Uh, and I think, uh, as these chain, times have gotten tougher, more cities have probably wished they didn't have a library, frankly. Uh, but that has been that component. What we've done in conversation with the county, that said, is, uh, worked, uh, with James Oxner at the library and said, how can we use these funds in order to enhance, enhance the library that we already have? And we actually used a portion, a very small portion, to help him bring in an architect and do some idea generation of what they can do with their existing footprint to get better use of the library that they already have. A really long answer to your question, but just to show you that what we're trying to do is be creative with these monies. So we're not, uh, just, you know, to the councilman's point, Councilman Shaw, that is, you know, how do we, we got a great library. How do we make it even better with what we have? Um, and with regard to the, how these fees are set, you cannot create, uh, better facilities in the future than you have today. Okay? So you can't put a higher burden on the future community than the one you have. And so, um, we've always said as a community that we d- we want development because it's part of the life br- blood of a community, but we don't want it to diminish the quality of life in Yuba City. So we want it to be at least as good as what we have, and that's the standard that we've set. What's really unfortunate is, you're exactly right. Our economy, our socioeconomics are not that of which Victor's showing us this evening. And the problem comes is when we're putting in a road or we're putting in a park, uh, we don't get discounted rates because we have that, um, that socioeconomic condition. And so the cost of putting in those improvements in the Rosevilles is the same as costing in putting in Yuba City. Uh, so we're trying to set the rates, and, and of course, as your council directs, we'll readdress them in a way that we don't diminish the quality of life, uh, but also respect the fact that you've got folks who are building homes, and they need to be able to sell those homes. And if they can't, then it's this quagmire, and it's broken. Uh, so we wanna set them low enough that the homes can be built, but high enough that we don't diminish the quality of life here in Yuba City. So, so there you go. Thanks.
Oh, thank you. I, I think calling it a library fee kinda threw a chain around my axle, use this CHP term here, because we, because we, the, uh, the library's the library, and it, and it's doing well now. I know we wanna do some improvements to it, but for, for collecting fees for twenty-something years-
Thirty years.
-how much do we have in there, and what do, what are we doing with it?
And that's information that we can bring back to you.
I would appreciate that.
At a future meeting. But I will tell you, our, uh, police and fire, I won't be shy in telling you that those are in, like, a million dollars or more in the negative.
Yeah.
Okay? And so there aren't, this isn't just like this big pot of money. Now, the road fund, uh, probably has ten million dollars in it. Uh, but if I looked over at the public works director and said, and how much? Oh, it's not that much. Pardon me. You've been very good in implementing projects. Thank you, Diana. Uh, but that's a fund that does accrue. Uh, but if you asked her, what's the total amount of projects to be built, she'd throw out a number of hundreds of millions of dollars.
And I suppose, the, because it all goes into one bucket, right? And we take the projects, or is it allocated?
It doesn't. Well, so, um, it does go into different buckets. For example, public safety, it goes into transportation, goes into public facilities, and goes into parks and recreation. So you're, you're exactly right. Within that transportation bucket, uh, that you can build any of those projects when the, within there.
Okay.
And that's at the council's annual discretion as part of the capital improvement program. So you, you have broad discretion to use those monies, because you're looking at a growing city, and you're trying to figure out from the policy side, where the best place to put improvements to encourage those, the growth.
Yeah, all right. The, uh, I'd just like to, if we're gonna put it towards, if we have a million dollars in negative for public safety, but we're gonna use library money for that, I'd like to call it duck-a-duck and then call it public safety money, um, personally?
No, it's, it's, it's just negative, and we're trying to-
Yeah.
-you know, build homes to feed backfeed it. In the meantime, frankly, your council's directed us, because of that negative, to move money from our general fund-
Right.
-into the impact fee mu- money, because you're saying you, you can't just let it be negative.
Right.
Um, yeah.
The, uh, the other thing would be, if we're doing capital improvements and we have a, what was it, a, uh, animal control fee? We have a brand-new facility already, so if we're collecting money for that, where would that be if it can't be for O and M?
So you're collecting money, uh, for one of two things. You're collecting money on the debt service that you have, so that the new people coming in are paying for the facility. If there weren't debt service, then the statement would be that that, as that, uh, um, facility eventually, as a city grows, there'll be a trigger point where you need to add kennels, and you need to add additional space, and that would be the capital money you'd use for that.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Follow-up on those. Steve, I'm not sure if you're gonna be able to answer this, or if you will. These sixteen hundred impact fees, are these designated funds or restricted funds?
Uh, they are absolutely restricted. Uh, and with regard to, um, and, okay, so, uh, if Robin were here as a CPA, there's, there's designated, there are different, uh, degrees, uh, um, and your council has discretion on where to designate those monies. But here, I'll give you an example with regard to restriction. Uh, the county was very interested in paving their front lot at the, at the library, and they said, we wanna use, could you give us the impact fees so we can pave the lot? That's not an expansion of the facility. Uh, so that isn't, that's an operating and maintenance issue. So that you're restricted on how you can use those funds. So when you're looking at our financial statements, because you, I'm sure you'll go back and, as you look at them, they are separate and apart from our, our general, uh, monies of the city.
Okay, let me further clarify. I get sixteen hundred fees are restricted, but the sub-accounts under that, are they designated or restricted? Because that makes a huge difference in what I'm seeing here and how we've expenditured over time. Because they can all be restricted under AB sixteen hundred for the capital improvements, and we've collected these fees, but then prior councils could have had the discretion to, you know, vary them from public safety to here because they're designated underneath. So I go back to my original question. Are they restricted or designated? I'm talking at the sub-account level.
Yeah, I don't have a good question, answer for your question, because I probably don't fully understand it.
Okay. If we could, uh, either have a follow-up, uh, query with Robin, because we really need to know the answer to that.
I, I, and I can't, I guess I can't appreciate it, so we probably have to have an offline conversation, so I can get a deeper level of the distinction between the two definitions of the words you're using, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, real quick? Ben?
Thank you. Okay, um, so i- if the ci- city should go forward and, um, update its, uh, capital facilities, uh, fee program, first thing that would need to be, uh, done would be to update the two thousand and seven fee study. Uh, once that has been accomplished, then there would, uh, be, uh, an outreach with the developers and the BIA, get their input on, on the revised fees. City council would then hold, uh, a public hearing on the fees, um, and then the first reading of the fee ordinance, uh, would occur, uh, in, in a subsequent, or actually, the, the public hearing could, could be held at the same, uh, city council meeting as, as the first reading of the fee ordinance. Uh, in a subsequent, uh, regularly scheduled meeting, uh, the fee ordinance would then be adopted. The fees would then, uh, take effect sixty days after the fee ordinance is adopted. And then after that, just maintenance of the fee program, including annually increasing the fees based on, uh, an inflation index. That concludes my presentation.
Darren, did you have more?
So I could just go over a couple of items that I've heard this evening?
Thank you.
So, uh, first, uh, to bring back to the council, um, the annual or five-year reports, and kinda how long we've, uh, been doing that, and provide that to, to the city council. Uh, another one is, um, sorry, I went to my, is, uh, after the city manager has an understanding, restricted, dedicated, uh, fees to make sure that we bring back our responses that relates to that. A response related to what are the current account balances in each account and where that stands, um, over the last, uh, you know, as soon as we've had it. I, I do have a, a brief list of, of kinda where we are, but, uh, the council, the ki- the fees are, are broken up into roads, parks and recreation, community facilities, levies, admin, and then there's a couple other bu- vista fees. So, uh, under community facility, that's fire, police, library, civic center, corporation, yard, and animal control. They're all under one, but each one has a separate account, a separate, uh, accounting. We can provide you, uh, that. Um, also, a full detailed list of total cost of development, to do development in the city of Yuba City, along with other communities. That will take some time.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not just a, a simple, easy, uh, analysis. Like I said, I was able to grab Rosevilles, and so they have some information. Uh, that was a doc, that was back in twenty seventeen, I think, is when they put it together. But that'll take a little bit more time. The other ones, obviously, we can provide those back to the city council as quickly as possible. So it sounds like, uh, from, uh, a couple of council members, the idea would be before you could really make a determination, and you need to understand the full, uh, cost of doing development, um, in the city of, of Yuba City. And, uh, as soon as we can provide that report, I, I can't tell, I'll have to sit down with Goodwin, uh, consulting to see, uh, what the cost would be for them to put that together, and when we can bring that back to the city council. So I don't wanna make a, a promise that I can't deliver tonight. Um, and then I do know that we have a number of people within the development industry that are probably very interested in, uh, commenting on, on the fees, and I can answer any of the questions you might have.
I appreciate that. Um, and so, yeah, I think it's very important to come back forward before we can make a decision with all of that information you just discussed. I know that one's gonna be, uh, very entail, but we'd appreciate that, so we can make a good decision, and, and, and not necessarily with the intent of lowering fees. We will, if it's appropriate and necessary, but, uh, to understand what they are and why they are, so we can justify that, um, to folks, and they can have a full understanding as to what they're paying, where the money goes. I do have one more quick question, if I may. Uh, in reading the, uh, handout, it, commercial folks are, uh, they, their fees were based on something, they've mentioned employees as point-two-four of a person. Is that, is that ring a bell?
Yes.
And so, can you explain that? Could the, the way I, the way I read it is, we have residential, and then we have, um, commercial, we have employees. So we charge them point-two-four of a person, but if that employee is also a resident, seems like we might be double-dipping, which I don't think is appropriate. So explain, if you don't mind.
Right. Uh, the, the point-two-four, uh, is, is based on the average number of ma- um, amount of hours worked by an employee, which is forty, divided by the total hours in a week, which is, I believe, one hundred and sixty-four, so that comes out to point-two-four. Um, it's generally understood that employees have less of an impact on, uh, city services than residents do, just because, you know, they're at their place of employment a lot less than residents are at home. And so, um, but it's not, um, empirically known what that exact relationship is. It could, it could actually vary from a location to location. And so, um, that being the case, um, we use point-two-four, um, eh, um, you know, way back when, when we developed the fee program, uh, years ago. Other agencies will put more weight on an employee, like point-five, or maybe even a one-to-one relationship, but a- as long as it's a, a reasonable relationship, and this is something that is done, uh, industry-wide, uh, using the point-two-four, um, you know, then it's, uh, it's acceptable, uh, a me- methodology of assigning a certain, uh, impact to, to employees. Now, now, should the, you know, uh, other agencies feel like employees have more of an impact, they will actually use point-five or maybe even one-to-one relationship. Um, I've seen that as well. As long as it's, it's a reasonable, uh, relationship, you know, you can, you can do that.
All right, so it's industry standard, and I can appreciate that, but it still seems to me, if, if that employee lives in the city, we're already hitting them when they, for the house they're living in. Now we're hitting them for where they work too?
Um, well, eh, at the same time, you can also have employees, you know, that may be the case at some point in time, but you can also have, uh, another company take over that facility, and they may not have an employee that actually lives in the city, so.
So now we're what-ifing it?
Pardon me? Yeah, I mean, i- i- it's a very nebulous kinda, um, issue.
Yeah, clearly. All right. But it is industry standard, and-
Yeah.
-we can, we still have the option to do what we choose to do up here, though. All right, thank you very, very much.
So Mayor, could, could you answer a question?
Yes.
If, if you were to change that, how would it affect the other impact fees?
Well, if you reduce the, the impact on non-residential development, you're gonna increase the impact on residential development. So you're basically gonna push over, push fees, uh-
We're pushing it, we're pushing it, that, that's our deal here, is for us to decide up here, after we have more discussion with some more contemporary information as to whether we feel it's necessary. Do you, do we may wanna keep the lid where it is, and, um, but we'll weigh those options once we get to more information. But yes, I, I realize we had to, it's kinda like we, recent discussions with Recology, they have a, a, uh, set amount of money at cost to do operations, and we either rob Peter or pay Paul. I get that.
Right.
Um, the balloon analogy, if you will. So, but thank you for that clarification as well. Did you have something, sir?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I just, a question for you. The, what I'm hearing from, from our staff and our expert is, there's going to be a bullet added in between, in the, uh, fee implementa- implement- uh, fee implementation process to where, before this goes out any further, we're going to have more, uh, pertinent information brought before us, so we get a full understanding before we start sitting down with developers and stuff? Is that correct?
Yes, based on what Mr. Gale just said. He went down the rundown of what he's gonna provide for us.
Okay. Um, could I, uh, offer a suggestion-
Yes.
-to you, Mr. Mayor? When we get to, then it would be the third bullet, where we conduct the outreach with developers and such. Um, could we, at that point in time, instead of just having, um, relations back and forth and discussions between our staff and developers, really get our community involved and form either an ad hoc committee or, or, or some kinda committee that's comprised of a couple of council members, couple of developers, couple of real estate, uh, brokers, couple of, uh, lenders, so we get a good picture of how this will affect our community all the way down the line, so that we have a lot more in-depth discussions, not just from the data, but from the real-world impact that's gonna hit our community to help us better make a decision in the long run?
Wouldn't that be the purpose of the initial outreach to begin with?
Right, but it doesn't clarify how we're gonna do that outreach. It just says, conduct outreach. So I'm offering up, uh, an idea on how to do that, because typically, my understanding has been between our staff and those people, and the council has never been a part of it.
So Mayor Harris, funny. In 2006, I was on the opposite side of the table. Councilmember Boom Garden was sitting on the side of the table of city staff. And actually, the council did set up an ad hoc committee of two council members. Councilmember Rory Ramirez, I think, and maybe Councilmember John Miller. And they invited the development industry to the table to have just the discussion. And if the council wants to do that, we can definitely put together that meeting. So so in 2007, when these were adopted, I can tell you I had the I was working the BIA. We spent about $100,000 hiring some consultants to to look into the minutia of every single item within the AB 1600 fee study to make sure that it was justifiable. It was actually the fee that you see now was actually proposed at well, a little over $60,000. And with the work between the professional consultant, staff and the private sector, the development industry, both resident residential developers and nonresidential developers, that's what came before the city council for approval. That's also where it came about the idea of trying to implement these over a few years. So if that's the council's direction, I I know that process well. I think we probably had 12 meetings and, you know, it was at the time, Mayor Ramirez says as many meetings that they needed to have so that it could go before the city council. So whatever the council's direction is, we can definitely implement that.
To have no problem with that at all. Well, my tendency, though, is to not oppose it. However, perhaps wait until you come back with your updated information and at that meeting decide what step to move forward with on that regard.
That was my intent, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, typically for a presentation, there's not there's not necessarily public comment period. However, I'm going to have one anyway. Because there's a lot of people I think will have endured our questions and our comments and when I say something, I know Holly does out there. She's just itching. You got that look on your face. But when I move forward to our open public comment period, anyone who would like to comment on anything we've discussed today, please get in line at the podium. I am going to start with our someone. And forgive me, Thomas, but is your last name Burris? Burns. Okay. Why don't you step forward first, sir?
Okay, my comments are on fee fee. That means every fee imaginable. So not I'm not directly related to the developer end of it. But I am a subcontractor. And the fee that's irritating me is the business license fee. Okay? So as a as a subcontractor, we have to pay a business license fee in the city of Yuba City. Okay? Because we have our office here. But every other city that we go into, they're getting a business license fee from us too. I mean, that's double dipping, triple dipping, you know, and I'm I'm a little concerned about that because I just did my application. And years gone by, we've paid, if you're a contractor, said, pay $35, skip the line 19 and send in your money. Okay? So I got an email back from someone in the city that said, no, we need a total of accounting of all your gross receipts. And I sent back an email saying, well, I'm a contractor. Oh, no, we still need that. And I said, okay. So is that gross receipts of work done in Yuba City? Now, I I didn't even have much gross receipts period last year. And and it's not the money issue, but the issue is that you're that I'm getting nickled and dimed everywhere I turn by every government agency. And from the state, the contractors license board, they're raising their fees, they're raising from the oh, I guess I'm out of time already, huh?
No, you have a little bit more.
Oh, okay. So that's that's my irritation. Why would a man have a business in this city? And and pay his business license fee, but every other city that he goes to wants to get a little piece of his hide too. So that's that's what's irritating me. And is there any part of a person's life that government does not want to be involved in? That's my question. And I'm ticked off about it.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anybody else care to speak? All right. I knew it.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jamie McLeod. I'm a real estate agent with Coldwell Banker Commercial and Darren knows I've been a thorn in his side for a couple of years regarding impact fees. It's really important not to just look at what the impact fees are. You also need to consider what are the median home values? It's easy to say, you know, Darren said, we're somewhere 50, 55 all in. Roseville's 72,000 roughly. But if I can sell a house for 100, 150,000 more, I'm going to go to Roseville. When it comes to the national builders especially, the bottom line is the bottom line. That is one of the reasons why we're not seeing growth here. I reached out to a couple of home builders I know and their response was, well, impact fees, land development costs, all those things adds up where it just doesn't, you know, look feasible here versus taking less risk out elsewhere. The other thing you need to be aware of is the new governor is starting to tie of affordable housing and low income housing production to grant funds. If Yuba City is not building anything and meeting the regional housing needs assessment, we're going to be in big trouble because we may not get transportation funds. We may not get housing funds. We may not get park funds that would be available to other cities. Just in closing, according to the National Association of Home Builders, for every $1,000 increase in the price of a home, nationally, we're pricing out 127,500 families. In California, that number is 10,000. So imagine that if we're up $15,000 higher than we should be, we are affecting 150,000 potential home buyers. So hopefully, the council will do something about the fees and we can get some of these people in here and building and continue to grow our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody would like to go after Holly, please step up, take a spot on the wall.
I'm not even going to use all my time. Mayor and council members, my name is Holly Shackelford and I have been with Inner West Homes for over 25 years. I have a unique position there as I'm involved in developmental of the land, what we actually build, and I am the face of the Realtor. So everything does trickle down to me. I see the customer. I work with the customer. I give the customer the news of what their taxes are going to be. And I get asked all the time, why are your prices so high? Why are my taxes 1.7% in your new subdivision? Well, I can go over them line by line and educate them on that. Then I have to explain to them that our lot cost was $84,000 per lot, highest lot cost we've ever had in the time that I have worked there. And from what I was told was also obviously since then too. But $137,000 before we start a home. People say, what about your subs? Maybe they charge you too much. We use local subcontractors. You're right. I know for a fact we can lower some of our costs. We can get some some subcontractors from Sacramento and they're going to do it for less. 90% of our subs are Yuba City subs. They born here, raised here, spend their money here. That's always been Ron Scott's philosophy. So who do we go to? I have been fighting impact fees, as some people know in here, for 10 years. I do feel they're too high. And as you guys, if 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 you can actually see how the building permits that are pulled are less and less as our costs go up and up, I believe you're going to wipe out building in this town. We are the last local builder who has never stopped building in over 35, going on 40 years. But I will be honest, it's to the point that as we look and look and look for more development land, it doesn't pencil out. The people here only make so much money. And unless we can figure out how to change that, we're maxed on what we're selling. November, December, nothing. Dead. I did make two sales last week. So that's my two cents. If you form that committee, I'd love to be on it.
Thank you, Holly.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Chris Starkey. I am actually not a resident of Yuba City, but I wanted to kind of piggyback on something that Mr. Burns said. So I'm in the county, which does not require a business license. But of course, if I want to come into the city to do any business, got to have a license. And my biggest issue with the business license, and it's only because I used to run the business license program for Yolo County, all it is is a revenue generator. What do the business owners, what do they get for a business license? Oh, piece of paper on your wall? Big deal. Who cares? Is there any programs out there that can help the people who have a business license to to learn something they need to learn, help maybe the small business owner learn something they didn't know that some of these bigger businesses know? That makes the justification for saying, here's my money, what do I get for it? Because right now I don't see that anybody gets anything for it other than a little piece of paper to put on their wall. It really doesn't mean anything. And then I I heard a comment earlier, I'm not sure who said it, but if you really think about it, to build, to get developers to build in Yuba City, I mean, obviously, we've had some building. But think about what we have in this town. We right now, the only thing the only thing that seems to come in here is coffee shops and fast food. Well, guess what? We don't need any more coffee shops and I think this town's fat enough already. We don't need any more fast food joints. So I think that I think there's got to be some way to put some focus on bringing in the right businesses to this community, not businesses that everybody wants, businesses that we need. But bringing in the right business and then figuring out how we bring things in here that can bring jobs, such as trade schools, that kind of a thing. I think that's where a focus really needs to be. So that once that starts to climb, guess what follows it? As soon as that commercial starts to climb, the residential climbs behind it. Watch how Roseville did it. When they started doing all the commercial, the residential came right behind it. Now look at where they're getting their money and look at what kind of money we're getting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tom Tucker, Harder Packing Company, 1321 Harder Park Way, Yuba City. As I was watching Victor's presentation today, pretty much everything seemed to rely on impact fees and specifically here, I want to talk about commercial too. Commercial brings a lot of benefit. When you look on the one side of the impact fee and you have $34 a square foot per impact fee per building, it's tough sell in this market. You need to look at the benefit side. If we bring you a project such as we brought you Super Walmart, we brought you Home Depot, I'm sure the city's made good money on that. We've brought you quality projects, but I can't do it at $34 per building square foot. You need to look at the fees on the benefit side, not just the impact sides. And that's all I hear here tonight is impact, what but not what the benefits are. Also, I noticed in Chico, they've last summer looked at their impact fees and in Yuba City, whether you're building 1,000 square foot home or you're building 35 out 3,500 square foot building, you pay the same impact fee. But I'll guarantee you that 3,500 square foot home with four garages with twice as many people live in it are going to have more impact fee than that 1,800 medium income house. So they have adjusted their impact fees so that the smaller sized dwellings don't pay the same impact fee. There's a a different proportion of the impact fee. I have much more, but I think I'm going to close there and I'll share it with the committee when the committee and I would look forward to being on any committee. It's a residential developer, multifamily and a commercial developer. We wish the city of Yuba City success, but we'd like to be successful also. Thank you. Any questions? I'm here to answer.
Nope. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
If I could add to your list, Darren, I think that's a good point. If we can maybe get a hold of Chico's study and consider give firm information on the spectrum, the kind of continuum of fees based on square footage. I think that's a good idea, at least potentially. Anybody have anything else from the council? All right. We're going to move on to closed session here, an opportunity for public comment on anything in the closed session. We're going to be discussing any member of the public wishing to address the city council on an item listed on the closed session agenda. We'll have an opportunity to present testimony to the city council prior to the city council convening in the closed session. That would be right now. Comments from the public will be limited to three minutes. No member of the public will be allowed to be present once the city council convenes into closed session. Do I have anybody in the public would like to comment? All right. Very good. Let's see. I think that is it. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the closed session items? Everybody can leave. I can just read them on the record.
Yeah, go ahead.
Item A, Public Employee Appointment Employment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 Title Interim City Manager. Item B, Public Employee Appointment Employment Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 Title Permanent City Manager. Conference of Labor Negotiators Pursuant to Government Code 54957.6 City Negotiator Shannon Chaffman, City Attorney, Employee Interim or Permanent City Manager. And item D, Public Employee Performance Evaluation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1 Position City Attorney. Thank you.